All right, welcome one and all to the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. For Wednesday, June 12th, all seven members of the council are present. I believe the mayor is attending on Zoom. So if you want to ask him any questions, he's a little under, under a weather. I have various members of staff, both the council side and administration side here, as well as a lot of guests and applicants and stuff like that in the audience. So. Thank you for being here. Our first item on the agenda for today is we're going to discuss a petition from Susan Lund requesting a rezone and master development agreement. To add senior housing overlay zone to approximately 1.77 acres. For a conceptual development, anyway, yada, yada, yada. Let's go to Taylor.
Great. Thank you Chair Jacob. I think you covered what we're looking at here. It's a rezone to add the senior housing overlay to just over one and a third. Or two, a three-fourth acre at a six, 8600 South and Redwood Road. So here we can see the site property right now. It's just behind the daycare which they also own and operate. The current zoning is professional office and they're just asking to add that senior housing overlay to that professional housing office. So professional office zoning. Future land use designation is professional office in this location, so it would not be changing that designation. And the concept plan is, here you can see it, the ground floor has some, some units and then it's podium parking. So there. Second and third stories will be this L shape you see here. So you have two stories of units over that ground floor podium. It has some sample concept. Podium? Podium parking, so the ground floor will have.
Use your mics whenever possible, by the way, guys.
So podium just refers to, it's a three-story building, but the ground floor of a portion of it would be actually used for kind of a parking structure, but it's not structured. It's the buildings that's built on top of that. Sample concept elevations, these are very conceptual. If this is something to move forward, we'll likely see something very different because I think these are just samples that they found online, but they would have to meet all of the standards of the city ordinance and go through the design review committee. So overview of the concept, it's 58 dwelling units, which comes to about 33.2 dwelling units per acre and that rezone that we've already talked about. The questions that we have of council tonight are kind of threefold. First, if the council supports the addition of the senior housing overlay in this location. If so, is the density appropriate? And if not, but the housing overlay is appropriate, what density range would be appropriate? So with that, half answering the questions, I know the applicants here as well.
I'm going to ask the first question. Given the fact that a senior house, senior housing has only had. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna count this on one finger. Since we've only had one successful senior housing project. How's this one gonna work? I, I. I'm trying to figure out. We want to put. 58 units in there. I'm just trying to figure out how. It's going to be successful or are we going to, in a year or two, Caitlin's smiling, she knows where I'm going. Are we gonna have somebody come in and lift? And say, oh, but we can't make senior housing work here. So we need to take the senior housing overlay off and just give us the density on the property anyway. You know, you know where I'm going?
I, I know exactly where you're going. I think that's a very valid question. My understanding is that the council will be considering a ordinance change very soon. That will actually prevent those senior housing overlays from being taken off of properties after they get them. I think that's something Scott's working on right now. As far as how it's going to work for the project, I'd leave that up to the applicants to discuss how they, how confident they are in their project.
Yeah, I would argue that's not really a fair question for our staff, right? It's not up to them to make the economics work. It's, it's, uh, it's up to the owners of the project to make it pencil and if they, this is what they think will pencil, it's, that's up to them. But my, my, my underlying point that I wanted to make though really quick, if senior housing is removed, it doesn't go to residential. This is a professional office zone. They're asking to put senior housing on top of a present, of a professional office. So if they remove senior housing, they're gonna have to come back and ask for an R3 whatever. To have multifamily, non-senior housing on this. No. What happens if we approve senior housing overlay in a PO zone, they build the building? And then. It's gonna be a really awkward use for professional office, I'd say. You, you see where I'm going is that if we, if we, if we have a, an apartment complex built on top of a PO zone. And then the apartment doesn't work. Then is, are they gonna come and say, oh, but we can't make this work, so we need to rent these out as regular apartments and. Not permitted in a professional office. But you know where I'm going. Yeah, like I said, they'd have to ask for a different rezone, right? They'd have to go R3 whatever. Yeah, but you, you know where I'm going because that's never happened in the history of the city. Right. This is why, by the way, I never, I didn't like adding senior housing to professional office anyway, but anyway.
So to follow up with what Councilmember Green asked, I, I want to know if you've done any feasibility studies because the reality is we've had a lot of developers come in. They want to put in senior housing overlay. And then they come back and say, oh, there's not a market for senior housing. So that's number one I want to address. Number two, I want to know when you plan to build these because for me, if it's not right away. I'm the end of the baby boomers. And after that, we're not going to need as much senior housing. So if it's not going to be right away, I'd just as soon wait until you're ready to build before we change from professional office. I will tell you what I did like about the drawings. Why, I at first thought, oh, not another one on Redwood. But I saw that there are other ways in, so I liked that. I like the idea that there is some covered parking because getting that snow and ice off is not fun at any age, but less fun now than it was when I was 12. So there are some things I like about what you're proposing, but I, but I. The reality is this council has been asked and we have another developer that rumor is, is going to come say, senior housing isn't working, it's not selling. So. Help me understand why you're different, what data you have to show that senior housing is needed there and when you're gonna build.
Those are really good questions and I'll kind of try to answer both of them at the same time. So we're, and we, we agree, like there, there's, there would be no intention to proceed and then, oh, it doesn't work. So we're, we're currently working on the, the market studies and, and to answer your first question, our intent would be to build right away. Now, if, if, if our market studies, as you said, if it's, if it's not working in other areas, then we won't even do it. We'll, we'll back off. Our, our understanding of this meeting was to get an initial feel before we start, you know, investing literally tens of thousands of dollars. Say, what's the temperature of, I mean, is this even something you guys would consider? And then we'll go through and make sure we do the market studies and because we obviously don't want to invest a lot of our money either and have it fail. I completely understand. And then we'll explore going back to more, you know, a, maybe the other use. Our, our concern right now is with office being very, kind of struggling in terms of all the remote work and, and stuff. So that was our hesitation to just go the normal office route. Because originally that's what we were planning and now we're saying, is, is there another option? And again, we're gonna go through and do all of our, you know, the utility studies and all the, there's, there's, you know, several studies that we have to do. And if any of those triggers say, hey, this is cost prohibitive, we don't move forward. And, and that would happen before we get to the, you know, the next, the next stage. As I understand, it's more of an informal meeting, but before, before it shows up on your guys' doc, docket, whatever, for the official agenda, thank you. For the official meeting, we would have, yeah, we would have that, that market study done showing demographic study, rent rates, all that stuff to ensure that it would be viable. And, and not say, hey, sorry, it doesn't work. Let's, let's bait and switch. We'd definitely not, you know, there's no intent. And, and I agree with the City Council member here. Yeah, Chair, thank you. That e- even if that was the case, you, you'd have to go through and rezone it again and that would give the council the opportunity to say, it's not happening. You have to convert this to an office. So I, I understand your concern, but hopefully that helped answer those questions.
By the way, can I use your name just for the.
Yeah, sorry, BJ Lund, I'm the architect.
So the answer to your question for me, i- if it is viable and you can show me that it's viable in that area and that you're going to start right away. I can probably be a yes.
Alrighty. Since we started off so negatively towards you, I apologize and I hope I can do a little bit of positivity here.
Hold on just a second. That's, that's uncalled for.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna do a positive spin here. I like it. I've lived in this area for over 20 years and that lot's been empty and nothing's been done to it. Professional office sounds great, but at this time, people are not building professional office because people aren't going back to the office. So this is an opportunity to put in something nice, something that people will need. And it is different than what you said in the past where maybe some felt like it was a bait and switch. I still don't feel like those were bait and switches. I feel like they came in, they came in with what they wanted to do and what they felt would work for this area. And so I feel like this, once again, is it gonna be success? I don't know. You don't know. He doesn't know. That's in the future. We aren't gonna know if it's gonna be a success today. But I would like to see something like this and there is a need for housing still, as opposed to a professional office. So I just wanted to say I'm grateful to see something good that comes for our city on a piece of land that's just been empty for 25 plus years.
And I think by the time this is done, I'll qualify for senior housing. So that. Part of my.
So, um, I'd just like to say that I'm a hard no on the senior housing overlay. Hard no. However, I think it's a beautiful project. I think that you should just go through the, the process of changing the zoning. And allow it to be housing for everyone. Now, there may be people who don't agree with me on the council, but that's just, you know, I'm just one voice. I think that it could be a great project. I think the density could be appropriate for where it's located. And I think it could work as just simply some, some apartments or condos. I'm being told that that can't happen.
Yeah.
But, uh, so Eric, could you explain that maybe for a moment? No embarrassment on my part. I, you're explaining something I didn't.
We have a balanced housing ordinance that wouldn't allow them to come in and build just regular apartment buildings. That's why they're coming for senior housing overlay. Because we, in, in our ordinance, and I, don't quote me, it's, it's 70 something, 20 something. Something like that. Yeah. And so, and that's so that we get the right mix for our community.
Well, I think it's hurting us in this case.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion.
So my first thought too is I really like that location, especially for what we have in the future. I am very much in favor of it and I actually agree with Kent. It is a great location for not just senior housing overlay, but for potential regular apartments, but if that's not an option, I am definitely a yes for that, that particular spot. I think it's a wa, like, like, like. I was about to say your first name. I know, I wanted to be professional. Chad said it, that's location needs something and if we can benefit the community, I am 110% for it.
We, we originally wanted.
Go ahead and swing the mic over so that we can hear you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. We originally wanted regular apartments and, and then we, we talked with Mark and, and, and he shut us down totally and then we wanted condos or, or townhomes and he shut us down on that, so.
So the, the question. And, and I'm leaning more towards what Kent's talking about than I would senior housing overlay. The question would be. Would it? Make more sense for the council? To look at Redwood Road, well, because we're, we're specifically talking about Redwood Road, right? If, if, if Redwood Road. Particularly as we're talking about infill, would Redwood Road and some of these. You know, we've had in the past, some of these, I'm gonna say goofy, goofy little developments where you've got the, the skinny lot that goes back and you got two acres and they want to put four houses on this little goofy driveway that enters Redwood Road, right? We have those. Would, would it make more sense to either look at the balanced housing ordinance altogether and look at? No, I'm, I'm gonna sound like a heretic here. Eliminate the balance, balanced housing ordinance. Or look at Redwood Road. And a Redwood Road overlay zone. And look at multifamily units along Redwood Road. Is, is that, is that something that would? Cause I'm, Ken, I'm more with you. I think the senior housing overlay causes some long-term issues.
As in what?
Well, if there's the fun, if there's funding or then, or the demographics change. And all of a sudden you don't have a whole bunch of people that are over 55 because the baby boomers are gone and that's a larger population. That, that narrows down into smaller populations.
Let me jump in real quick. Also, right now, interest rates are high enough that people who would normally sell their homes are locked into those homes because of their low interest rate. And so they're not, they're not downsizing right now and.
I don't want a pigeonhole either. Yeah, I don't want.
It's creating this, this issue currently in, in, in the current market where senior housing just doesn't work right now. That's what, that's at least my observation and, and so I'm just agreeing with you.
I'm, I'm in the same three group, yeah.
So the, the issue is what they've brought before us is what we have in our bylaws and with the ordinances that we have. Or like she said, they wanted to put in something else, but they couldn't. This is, this is what they're bringing forth to us. So if, if we want to do something else, then we're gonna change those things.
Yeah, they can't, they can't do something different under the current laws. What I'm saying is, should we change?
Should we change the current code?
Code to, to allow something like this to happen and not just here, but up and down Redwood.
I would be in favor of that.
Is a specific kind of a unique thing. Taylor, is the reason why a, a non-age restricted zone here wouldn't work is because it would be a spot zone?
Uh, it's not even bad. It's, it's, it's our balanced housing ordinance and this isn't within one of our station areas. And it's also our future land use designation here would also have to change. And those are legislative decisions up to the council, but under our current ordinances and general plan designation, we just didn't feel like we could bring something that would be a hard no.
Frankly, I think, I think balanced housing ordinances in general have a bullseye on them at a level of government of one or two steps above ours.
And that's.
And this is what's frustrating about government. When we see an opportunity and it's black and white, we should be able to adjust to the needs of our city and this is a need for our city.
Right, right.
I'm not sure that it's all black and white. There's at least one council member on here, maybe two, that are here because of an apartment complex put in by their homes.
Agreed.
So there are people that bought single-family homes near Redwood Road. And they might not think that you're all having a great idea. They might say, wait a second. So I think that we have to weigh everything out, but I think that the discussion tonight, as Vice Chair Lamb said, is really to give these good folks an answer. So I, I really think we need to see, are there four or more of us that are willing to say we would entertain your, your development because that's what they're here for. And so I think that's up to the chair to ascertain for them.
So I, I actually have a question about the densities concerning, that's the question that you came to ask. And that is the units themselves, as you have conceptualized them here, are they like a full apartment? Is it? Cause I think when the senior housing overlay was considered for professional office, it was more the, uh, the, the assisted living type, the, the, you know, because you'd have the doctors and those things and the other things that are near in a professional office zone. So you add the senior housing so that they live near their providers and things. Is, is this unassisted senior housing? Is this assisted living? Is this, what, what do the units look like? Is it an apartment?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're full, full units kitchen. They do have common interior spaces. It's not like, like apartments where it's, you know, breezeways or whatever. And so there's common spaces in there, but I don't know if assisted living center was an option for us.
And the amount of parking they have in shows you it's not a, not assisted living. It's.
So, yeah, I was just gonna say, my, my, my thought behind it is. I mean, like I live in a four-bedroom, four-bathroom house, right? I mean, 2,000 square feet. It's not big, 22 something hundred square feet. It's not big, but you could really easily keep the exact same footprint and divide it into two or three individual apartments, if you were so inclined, and call it three units. Or is, but in practicality, it's one unit. So what I'm saying is like, like a senior housing, like an assisted living type place, a, a unit is a bedroom, right? Or a bedroom and a bathroom. Or maybe a bedroom, a bathroom and a hot plate or, you know, a little kitchenette kind of a thing. So I'm just wondering what the characterization of this is. Is it one bedroom, multiple bedrooms? Is it multiple bedrooms and living rooms and kitchens and like, how many square feet are we talking per unit kind of thing?
Yeah, they're, they're all either one bed or two bed units, roughly, say between around six to 900 square foot each, depending on, on which unit it is. So.
Okay, so, so small but apartment, small apartment style. Okay. Just kind of studio style. So you anticipate with senior housing, you have less parking requirements, right? Than you do for, for a traditional multifamily zone. Would you anticipate needing the senior housing to get the density because you can have more units per parking stall or less parking stalls per unit? Do you need the senior housing to make it pencil? So you get enough units to make it work out? Because obviously if we went, like a couple have suggested and, and frankly, I think is probably right as well. You went with a traditional multifamily zone or even a, like a PRD with a high density label on it. Your parking requirements would be higher, therefore you'd have fewer units you could put in, right? You gotta take out some, there's only so much land, right?
Yeah, I, I would say at this point, it's, it's more just a concept. We, you know, said, what, what can we fit on there with, within here? And you're right, if it was more traditional, you would have a higher parking ratio. I think we were at 1.25 if I recall and a normal is like two or two and change, right? So, so yeah, it would reduce the count, the unit count, but I don't. And again, we'd have to look at, look at the numbers and run those, but I don't think that's a, that's a big factor. And that's, and that's part of why in our, in our commentary, we said this is a proposed density and, you know, as most people do, they try to maximize it out. And we said, well, is there a density? So even if we had to adjust that density down, we're looking for like, what's, what's within reason and what the council would consider. So I, I would say, no, we don't have, if it was this other development and it had fewer units, I don't think that would change much, so.
Okay. I think I'm, I'm in the same boat as a couple of these others. I'd rather see it as a traditional multifamily spot development than a than a senior housing overlay, especially over a PO. I'd be okay with a senior housing overlay over an R3 or a PRD. But over the PO, for me, it doesn't fit the intent of that ordinance. The, the professional office senior housing is on, like I said, is to locate some housing near providers for seniors, right? That's, that's kind of, and I voted against that when we added that to the code six or seven years ago. So. Just because I, I thought living in offices was probably a bad idea. But I think I, I, I'm in the same boat. Let's, uh, kind of get opinions as we go around.
Well, I know we can't do this tonight, but I mean, just down the street on Redwood Road and what do you think, 115th South, there's a whole new complex that got put up for senior housing.
But that's assisted living. That's a different type of complex.
But no, there's another one down the street.
There, there's several.
Yeah, there's both. And those went up and people are living in them. So I, I don't think people won't buy into this. But I think the question comes back to these three. If the council can't support all three of these, then we can't move forward.
They can move forward with something, but let's get some direction. Is there, is there more in favor of adding the senior housing overlay to the PO zone? And anybody?
All right. I'm willing to entertain that if they can tell me when they're going to start construction and that they've done their due diligence and know that it will be viable for them.
I'm willing to entertain it, but I don't like it.
I'm in the same boat. I, I can entertain it and have you go down the road, but I would hate to have you then go down and have us go, well, nope, now that we've had a chance to look at it. We're sorry. So that, that becomes a hard thing. What you've seen is we've been burned with.
Can you tell?
And, you know, a lot of times it's innocent until proven guilty, but right now.
Right now it's guilty by association.
That's right. So here's, here's.
I do like what the other people have been saying.
But they can't do what some of you are suggesting.
We can change the code.
Well, right, but until.
We can try to change the code.
They can't go forward on us.
But we, but if we decided we wanted to have a discussion of changing the code, we could change the code while they're doing some of the things to find out what's like traffic. Cause one of my questions was gonna be, how's the, how's this gonna affect the traffic flowing?
Traffic going onto Redwood Road, hey, you know what? Redwood Road's Redwood Road. But if it's got an outlet to the east, because 8660 turns into 8605 and it goes to 13th West. What's, what's that, what, what are an extra 50 or 60 houses going to do to 8660 and 8605 to go east? So that would be one of the questions that I'd want is I'd like to know how, what the traffic impact is going that way.
And that'll be part of our traffic.
We know that, we, we know that, but if people want to avoid the light at Redwood and they start going east to 13th East. And Taylor, here's my question. PRD. Why can't we do a PRD there? We could change the zoning. We could change the zoning from PO and, but, and PRD is an exception to the balanced housing ordinance. PRD would require some offset with a couple of amenities, but those amenities should help people in that apartment complex. And it sounds like they're kind of planned for anyway with the common living space and stuff like that. And so I'm, I'm wondering why a PRD here wouldn't work. I know it's a, I know it's a rezone and not just a senior housing overlay.
I know it's a, I know it's a rezone and not just a senior housing overlay, but a PR, but it seems to me a PRD might fit in there. And maybe that's the way we, maybe that's the way we, maybe that's a better approach. We don't change the ordinance, but we look at changing the zoning to a PR. Because if you think about it, Gadsen, Gadsen Village, block down the street.
Across the street.
Yeah, literally. Oh, yeah, it is. It is right across the street, isn't it? Just to the north. It's a PRD. So this doesn't, it's one I voted against by the way, because I didn't like a couple of things in it. But when I was on the planning commission, but that is a PRD. And so moving a PRD on the south side of the road isn't inconsistent with what we've done. And so, I'd, I'd be more, I, I'm with, I, I'm with Kent. I'm with the council member Shelton and I'm with council member Jacob. Putting the senior housing overlay on a PO, doesn't work for me. But if we can put a PRD or we can look at modifying, the balanced housing ordinance or something to make something like this fit. I'm more, I'd be more towards that. And I think that would be a better show to, of, uh, playing politics with the governments, as, as Zach called them, the governments of us. So I would prefer PRD or changing the ord, changing, um, the balanced housing ordinance here than I would to use as senior housing overlay.
Do you want to add anything?
Process be to change the ordinance? How long would that take?
What, who put him on the spot?
When you're asking.
He's gonna have to write it.
It's, it's not even him. It's the seven of us. And I tell you, it could take.
We would need to be directed by the council, which you could do that, I guess, at this meeting for staff to start working on something like this. I, I would say realistically a few months to get it right and to go through the public hearings at planning commission and city council, and get it to a place where the council's comfortable with it.
The process though, Taylor, if, if I'm not wrong, Scott, process for changing it, for rezoning to a PRD as, to rezone to a senior housing overlay is kind of the same process, right?
So just to clarify, you would rezone it to PRD with the senior housing on top of it.
With or without, I think we're, I think.
And I'll, I'll have to pull up the, the section of code, but PRD and Taylor or Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but only allows a certain percent of the housing units as attached. Yeah. I think seventeen percent of the total units in a PRD can be attached. PC and PRD. Yep, I'm getting dialed by Larry.
It would also trigger a general plan update, which we don't have currently because this is general planned, is professional office.
Now, if you're talking about a code amendment to, for another exception to the balanced housing ordinance, we already have a Redwood Road overlay zone as Commissioner Green and, or Councilman Green is, is. I know, I, I, I reverted back, I'm sorry. Um, that would be, uh, a, a more, d- doing a top, top to bottom review of the balanced housing ordinance would definitely take more time. But if we're just adding an exception to the balanced housing ordinance of, of just including, the Redwood Road, anything within the Redwood Road overlay zone, which is already on our maps. Then that would be a pretty, that would be a pretty simple text amendment.
Well, we have to think about another thing too. I mean, if we're changing this, what if they want to do something different than an apartment complex? What if they want to do row homes or townhomes or homes?
But if we make an exception to the balanced housing in the Redwood Road overlay zone, they could do townhomes.
Right. And that's what I'm saying is they brought this forth to us because that's the way the ordinances and the codes are. But chances are, and I'm not speaking for you, I'm just saying, they probably didn't want to do that. They'd probably rather do something else like townhomes or.
And, and if we modify, if we modify the zone to allow multifamily, maybe that be, maybe that allows for better creativity for that one point eight acres as opposed to.
Maybe a similarity would be the, the, uh, ivory homes that were built just down the road here.
You're talking about the Sequoia Village?
Yeah, the Sequoia Villages.
So I think, I think what we're seeing here as far as consensus or, or general, general direction is we're okay with the density. We're more or less okay with senior housing overlay, more or less. Um, love to see you maybe propose it both ways. But maybe the, uh, the underlying zone is, is what needs to change or what needs to be updated in code. I think as far as just the general direction from the council goes. Um, Corbin, did you have?
I ask account, uh, Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry, question Chair. Um, if they were to go that way, is this thirty-three units per acre the top of what they want to do? Or if they did go the other way, does the council see the possibility? Cause if they have to start structuring parking, that's what I'm wondering about.
Right. No, it's, and it's a valid question. Um, just talked to a developer about another parcel on Redwood Road, having that exact same question. So, I mean, they probably won't go higher than five stories. They probably won't go with too big of a parking garage just for costs. You know, you just, you just can't do it. Um, well, you can do it, but nobody would be able to rent them because your rents would be way too high. Um, so, yeah. So what do you think? I mean, density wise, units per acre, are they about right? Would you go higher? Would you go, would you want to cap them lower?
I think it's about right personally. I don't want to go any higher. For that right there, we don't want to go any higher.
It almost seems like it'd have to go lower if they're not going the, if they're not going with the senior housing. Then it means that the parking goes to, over to a person. So that almost knocks out a third of your houses right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless they go more stories or structured parking.
It's, I, I would say no to more stories. So I would, I would tell you to back off of that. Seems like it'd have to go to four.
But our appetite is there for something.
Yeah. So Taylor, I think that, answer your question is I think the zone, the density is about at the, at the top end of the, for, as far as the will of the council goes. Anybody disagree with that? Not to say that if you didn't get.
I personally would be in favor of a little higher density there.
Yeah. I was gonna say, not that, not that if you came up with the right plan, we wouldn't entertain something, but I think you're, you're batting in the right ballpark as far as that goes. So I hope that gives you a direction.
Yeah.
More or less, do you have any other questions you'd like to throw our way while we got you in front of us?
Can you do a variance on the, the extra?
The parking?
Any age, any ages.
No, the variance, ver, the.
That's a question for the staff, but, uh, better question for the staff.
You're gonna have to meet the zoning, whether it's, you modify a zoning zone to allow it or you meet the senior housing overlay.
So I think, I think though, Scott, do you have a pretty good idea?
Well, I just wanted to get clarification. I- is that, do we have the majority of the council that wants us to look at a text amendment to allow for, um, multifamily in the Redwood Road corridor?
My, my concern with that is here it works because there is another road for them to get out. Yeah, two more roads, but there's other, there are other ingress, ingress available. For not, not all of the plots of land along Redwood afford that. And it concerns me dumping, a lot more cars off of driveways. And I don't know if UDOT will even entertain that personally.
So, uh, I, I agree. I think one thing that we have is they would still require rezones, even though it'd be allowed. We'd still have to rezone that property because there's not any multifamily property along Redwood Road. So we would still have to go through a rezone process. So it would be a legislative.
So it'd have to be reviewed.
Yeah.
Not, not saying that you should bias decision, but you wouldn't be throwing that out.
Well, and I, Scott, I would think that you may be able to be creative enough. Um, when you're talking about multifamily on Redwood Road to deal with the access issue as well. And see if that couldn't be addressed in the text amendment.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll be careful.
Going with that?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think, I think there's some pretty good direction here. And I, I, I personally like the kind of consensus we've come to is, is your project is, is welcome. Just the avenue, I think that, that's before us isn't quite the preferred avenue to get there.
No, it's good. We'll work, we'll work with the planners and, and see if we can sort of adjust that and, and see if there's, uh, appropriate overlay that can allow a, a more diverse, uh, facility. So.
Right.
So is it, we're just waiting for this?
I would work with the staff.
Our staff will get with you.
Okay.
Right away and, and lay out kind of the next steps.
The only other option is to build offices and I don't think that that's, that's.
There are dime a dozen.
Yeah, this is not what you're looking for.
No, no.
I think we want to help make it the best possible solution for everybody.
Yep. Yeah. Cause if this did ever get a senior housing overlay and then it was removed and it did revert to professional office, you'd have some really weird professional offices in there. Not to say people haven't done it in old homes and stuff like that. I'm just saying it would just be weird. It would be like working from.
There's been those buildings where you have your office at the bottom and you live there. It's kind of that works, but yeah.
Yeah. All right. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, appreciate it. With that said, let's move, uh, forward then on the agenda. The next item up for bids is discussion, this is, uh, to be on the agenda by the way. Regarding a, a discussion regarding petition by Boyer Company and Peterson Development regarding a future land use map amendment. Uh, rezone and a master development plan slash agreement, changing future land use designation and, uh, zoning and some other stuff. Merced Creek, this is at fifty-six hundred west and Copper Hills Park. No, this is New Bingham Highway because it's west of fifty-six. Does Copper Hills go west of fifty-six? I thought it went from fifty-six to. This development's on the west side of the road though. Anyway, it is fifty-six and Copper Hills.
Fifty-six hundred and eighty-six hundred south.
Yeah, there you go. Thanks for keeping me on track. Yeah. Um, and Taylor, this is your item also.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Pick an applicant or two to come to the table if you'd like. Oh, okay, guys. Come on. Don't gang up on us.
You're gonna have to share seats.
Look, they brought the muscle. Look at this. Nice.
Oh, good. I'll share with Scott.
I think we need a bigger table.
Yeah, wish I did. Okay.
I know, again, like I'm, I'm intimidated.
I have not seen these, so.
Well, they changed it. Oh, they added this part. This is north.
Yeah, we're ready.
All right.
Yeah. All right, we're ready.
I'm ready. Um, so as mentioned, this is, uh, requesting a future land use map amendment, changing the designation from medium density residential to high density. As well as a rezone to add the IOZ, uh, overlay zone. It's at the inner, uh, the intersection of eighty-six hundred south and fifty-six hundred west, just off of Mountview corridor. The property right now has some SC two and some HFR zoning on it currently. Um, they're proposing to add the IOZ zone, uh, the IOZ overlay area in that ordinance is area A. So that is one of the, uh, areas in that map which does, uh, facilitate or anticipate the IOZ being added in this location. Future land use designation currently is, you can see most of it's medium density residential with some, a regional commercial and some neighborhood commercial as well. And proposal to go to high. Uh, so we've got a conceptual plan. We're really looking at what's on the left side of the screen here. That's, uh, the multifamily portion of it, which I believe the applicant is, uh, mainly focused on. As we move farther to the south, that's where it becomes a future commercial center and commercial core. Uh, I don't believe that's technically part of the Merced Creek project, but they would obviously play into each other. So again, this is just a closer look at that concept. So we have, uh, the large buildings located up along the road. And then, uh, more parking in the back towards, um, Mountview corridor. Uh, where the road used to go through their old Bingham Highway that you can see they're using that as their open space. And I think they, uh, portion of it is aggramanities. Um, is that right?
And it's worth probably mentioning that that is deed restricted to be open space.
Correct, yes. Uh, so this is a, a good map, which just kind of shows how the site would, uh, fit into current bike and running trail systems. Uh, as you can see, uh, if and when eighty-six opens, uh, they'll have that connection right over.
Please not an if.
When eighty-six opens, they'll have a, a direct connection, uh, across the Mountview, uh, corridor into Rondewood Park. And some of the improvements we're making up in there. Um, then the high school, obviously it's across the street.
Well, one important side heard on this is the exit on eighty-sixth is only a right turn, only no left turn. Same with coming from the west, it's only a right turn in. So. Just due to the, the, the bridge.
So, uh, again, a right turn in.
So going, right turn in, right turn out.
That's all. Okay. I misunderstood. I, I thought it was going to have to be eliminated, but it's, it is right in, right out. Okay.
Uh, the applicant has done a site study, which this shows kind of, uh, the visual from existing homes, looking over that eighty-six hundred towards where their, their project, uh, will be. So you can see, um, how much of a visual impact this would have on existing residents or how little might be another way to look at it. There's not a whole lot that's going to be in their immediate line of sight. Now, obviously if you're inside your house, maybe you see a little bit more, but it's not.
Already kind of took most of the view out of the way.
Yeah. Uh, and so this is just a site that they've done from a different location in that existing neighborhood. And they've shown us some, uh, lifestyle imagery. So this is, uh, the fill I would go for, especially in that, uh, de-restricted open space, the aggramanities.
You can't see the buildings in these pictures. Yeah, where's the bikes? The mayor's gonna be very offended. No bikes in this.
Um, and then just some renderings of the buildings. So we can see they're about four stories, uh, mixed, mixed materials. A four-sided architecture. Car has.
Only Teslas are allowed in the park. Oh, there was a Volkswagen bug in the back.
Yeah, slug bug.
Slug bug.
Um, so the applicant has provided a, at least two concepts. One was, uh, I think they're preferred. Is that five hundred and ninety-two units? There's also another one that they did after talking to staff, which reduces that down to about five hundred and sixty units. And some of the questions we have tonight are, are similar. Does the council support density in this range? If the council doesn't support this density, what range would be appropriate? The applicant is also proposing some reduced parking. Um, that's up to the council to see if that's appropriate. And then which of the concepts do you prefer as a council? Are building heights and renderings appropriate for this location? And do we have enough, uh, detail for that future commercial project? If not, what would you like to see included in, uh, future submission? So with that, happy answering the questions or there's this team here who probably knows a lot more about the project than I do, is really excited to talk to you as well.
Can I, can I start with the bottom one first? Is there enough detail provided for the future commercial project, the future commercial projects on West Jordan City property? Have we talked to the redevelopment agency about that and whether we're even amenable to that kind of a project? If not, uh, my, my, my opinion is there's not enough detail for any future.
Well, on the bottom one, and on the last question, yeah, there's no detail about the commercial.
There's no detail about the future commercial project.
That's on us.
And there would be a lot more detail needed for us to buy off on it to, to sell the property, I would think.
Can I chime in on that issue? Uh, the, they want, the applicant is requesting that the IOZ zone be applied to this property. Uh, but this property doesn't abut, the interchange, uh, has to be, what's the term in the code, the IOZ code? It has to be master planned.
Right.
Or integrated, uh, as part of the IOZ zone. And so, their, their renderings of what might be on our property, the RDA's property in that commercial area, is because we said, hey, it has to kind of show a rough overview of what your project might look like with a commercial project next door of ours in order to make application. Of ours in order to make application through the IOZ zone, so it's not a um.
Is the commercial already in the IOZ or is it?
No.
So the the whole piece of property is on the on the zoning map. Area A includes everything from eighty sixth to ninetieth, their property only extends.
Right, so I'm, that's why I'm asking, is on the IOZ map currently. Is is any of this integrated, is any of this already applied to the IOZ?
No, we haven't rezoned any of it with the IOZ.
Okay, but.
And that's, but that's what you're asking for, right? If we if we grant the IOZ for the residential, we're also applying it to the future com- commercial.
I I think the concern is, and Corbin, correct me if I'm wrong, but we wanna make sure that if this is approved. That it's not gonna be segregated and boxed off from our future commercial, we wanna make sure they work together and they're integrated.
Right, so if if that's the case. So if we're talking about the whole area A on the 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 in the IOZ ordinance. Then West Jordan City has to become a co-applicant to request that zone change on the south end of the property.
I- in part, this is, this is kinda the fun, the fun, well, the fun, the the challenging aspect of the IOZ, it requires. Uh some master planning, but it it it, the IOZ doesn't go into the level of detail of of how how much. Um, you know, we we don't have specific users on our, on the RDA's property yet, right? So we've asked the applicant to give us one potential idea of how it could be developed out, so.
And I get where you're going, but the fact of the matter is. West Jordan City has to be a co-applicant for this rezone because the rezone is gonna go from eighty six hundred south to ninety.
So there's more than that Kelvin, and I don't know if I would use the word co-applicant, but there's three ways that. West Jordan City has to not only just support the rezone, but really be supportive of this project as a whole. Uh use of or access of the IOZ zone goes through our property. The New Bingham Highway Corridor open space through UDOT would require city participation. And the sale of the land, the sale of the triangle piece of land, uh they've.
Already done that, haven't we?
It's under option. Uh contingent, um it's under option, they have the option to execute it, they could execute it now, they haven't executed the option yet. They wanna get feedback on this project here and this proposal here.
Right.
So it's a, so so we're a little bit more joined at the hip than a typical uh arm's length rezone request.
We can't just cons- the IOZ rezone is for the entire piece. It's gotta be one rezone for the entire piece, not just for the north end that Petersons and Boyers wants to develop, isn't that right Scott?
Yes, you're 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 correct, now it allows.
If this comes back to the council, then the city's gotta be uh an applicant in that to reason. The redevelopment agency's gonna have to be um an applicant with that. And and the question is, where's the conflict of interest there if we res- so that's something that uh. Yeah, I I mean, I'm sure we, the city council can rezone redevelopment, but we'll be, you you know where I'm going with that, so we'll have fun with that.
Yeah, again, that's kind of a process question, but let's let's talk thirty thousand foot, you know.
Make sure that we all understand, we're talking about the north half of uh the north part of a piece of property. That we've gotta rezone the whole thing at once, cuz we just can't rezone.
Yeah.
We can't just rezone this section of the property.
Gotta do this section of the property.
Gotta be, yes.
Bigger map.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I had a question about the parking, so a number C, I I had number C, letter C, sub-question C. Um on this, and my question is really actually for for staff, uh are these parking. Requirements fungible like this, are they, are they subject to change at the will of the council on a rezone? Is that unique to the IOZ? Can we just do, and that was a question that was on the previous discussion item, right, was parking stalls per unit? Can we just change it?
So our parking ordinance does allow for large scale developments for the council to consider and approve different parking standards. I think we did it uh on the uh west side of Mountview Corridor at seventy eight hundred and those apartments at that location. Uh in the past before I started.
Uh which which ones, sorry?
I think they're Gladstone, they're really.
Oh Gladstone, yeah. Parking there is a disaster, by the way, but yeah.
So uh it is in our code currently, that is uh something the council.
That is something we can do, okay, I wasn't sure that, I wasn't sure that was something nation could do.
Let me ask a parking question with that though, just so we can get an idea, since you guys know your layout better. With studio apartments, three-bedroom apartments and total number, switching to those numbers, how many parking lots should there be? And how many would we be down to?
So I calculated it for the five hundred and ninety-two units, the requirement would be one thousand one hundred and eighteen. And they're providing eight hundred and eighty-three.
So twenty percent discount, basically, so.
I am not willing to go down on parking, I'll just say that right now because. We get so many complaints around apartments because there's not enough parking. And there isn't a place here to put big streets that they can then park on the sides, that's not available in this area. And so they're either gonna be parking in residential areas or future commercial areas, and either way, I don't think that's a good thing and. More and more families are sharing units, it's not like the number of people in units are going down because. People are sharing to make the rent.
See, that's actually why I'm okay with it in this project, is because usually we get complaints from neighbors, from neighborhoods. When when a parking in a multifamily spills out, right, it's onto street parking, it's onto street parking adjacent to. Single-family, you know, low-density neighborhoods or lower-density neighborhoods. Um it's lining streets, making the streets unsafe, that kinda thing. Here, especially if we said there's no street parking on fifty six hundred west, which I think we could do, um. There's nowhere for it to go, you don't get, oh, you you won't get overflow parking because there's nowhere for them to park. There's literally nowhere to go, cross the street to the high school? That's not gonna work, they police their own parking, right, uh Arctic Circle has about ten spots, so if they wanted to park there, but then they're crossing a five-lane. Road to get home with their, you know, armload of groceries, that's not gonna happen either, right? So um I think people who will look at these uh just from a a free market kinda perspective. People who will look to buy here will know, you get one stall, you buy the studio, you get one stall, right? We have so many guest parking spots, but you you get one, and that's what you get. In a, you know, in a three-bedroom, you get, you get two, and you don't get three, you get two. And you probably won't get another one, right? Well, here, I tend to agree with you because it's isolated. But, yes, there's always that that big elephant in the room with the big bite. My concern is, this this easement, the UDOT easement, supposed to be public right away. And I, from what I understood from some, from from some previous information, is that that may even be a trailhead. If there's no parking, if if we reduce the parking by twenty percent. There is no way on earth that the public are gonna be able to use that trailhead. Because all the apartment people are gonna bleed over into the public parking. Because we reduced it by twenty percent and they're gonna just go park in the public parking. And then people from the area that wanna go use that from the trailhead aren't gonna have any place to park.
Yeah.
So that's my, that's my bigger concern with the parking is, yet, they're not gonna be. It, the overflow parking's not gonna park on fifty-six, they're eighty-sixth, and if they wanna park in the weeds on the redevelopment property, okay, go four-wheeling for a while. But my concern is cutting out twenty percent of the parking just means that the the public, the parking that's for public and it's reserved. Goes away, um because that's the twenty percent you're cutting out. Um and it goes away and the public aren't, isn't gonna be able to use the public right away, and uh that I cannot support.
Yeah, does this work, yeah, hi everyone, Nikolai Lazariv, just from the Boyer Company and uh totally hear your concerns, and I think that. What we are proposing is really just these market rate parking ratios for the rental units themselves. Um when we're talking about a potential issue from the trail standpoint, it really is relating to the visitor parking. What we find in a lot of these communities is actually that the visitor parking is grossly underutilized. Um typically, when somebody is renting a studio, it's typically a a cost-effective decision, they they usually own one car. Um just given the cost of owning two, and we don't see a lot of people sharing studios, which is why we're proposing one. For the one-bedroom, we really see a mix of both, and the one-point-five per unit would be consistent with the city's code. Um the two and the three-bedroom, we do not see people having more than two cars for a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom. Um that the, just, and this is something also that what we'd like to propose to the council as well is that. All this is also conditional on a professional traffic study. You know, we uh actually, per code for modifications to the parking standards, we, it's the onus is on us. To propose a parking, a a a traffic study, so with professionals that are going to go to comparable properties. And that would give you guys a lot more clarity into where these, how these these other lots are being utilized. And what the parking ratios are in the city, and so we definitely don't wanna just say, well, this is what we want, you know. Please approve it, we wanna give you guys the data before we make the recommendation, so. In this meeting, we really are, we would love to also focus mostly on the density, understanding your your thoughts on the density for the project. Because if we understand the density from the project and we understand the concerns on parking, we'll go to work and do our job to make sure that we give you guys the data. So that we can have um a probably a way more informed uh parking discussion. Um and what we think could, you know, is not gonna conflict with the trail and. Uh to confirm your point, we absolutely intend on providing a trail within the UDOT parcel as publicly uh open uh space. And we also don't think that that will be the central point of activity, meaning that that won't be the only point where people are actually accessing the UDOT trail. Because of the parking that's available at the Ronwood Complex just to the west, we believe they'll go through through the UDOT piece. Um but mostly the focus of activity will be to the west from the park. Um that's our thought, but we we wanna get you guys more data on the parking before we, you know, are are really asking.
And I agree with that, that we need more data, but what I'm, what I'm afraid of. Is when there's a trail that runs into an apartment complex, people are gonna say. Oh, I can't go in there, that's private property, and so, you know, I've got, it it's a, it's a public right away. And if people aren't welcome there to to start there, to end there, it's gotta be welcoming and there's gotta. It it's gotta appear open enough that residents can go to that and say. Yeah, I feel comfortable going into this because this is my park. This is West, this is a, this is a UDOT easement that is my park. And I'm, the the more to me, the more restrictive the parking is. The more that the outside people are gonna feel unwelcome and it's not, you 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 see where I'm going?
Yeah.
Uh and to end of that, to go with what Councilmember Green uh said, when we talked earlier, I had talked about that. When you come to us, make sure you show us that you've got that stuff in mind. That, you know, you you're here to talk directly about that sort of stuff and lighting on these trails and things like that, the pictures you've given us don't show that. So it shows me that I asked for something and said, please be cognizant of that cuz it's something we're gonna want, and then. It wasn't put into into play that we're seeing here today, so that, that's a huge thing to me, if it's gonna be, if you're gonna come here, is that big thing, if it's a part of this trail system. You've shown us nothing to let us know that you want it to be a part of the the trail system. I I love, I think this is a perfect place for uh this kinda density and I like most of that, but I just wanted to point out that, that that was something that a concern I had. And it seems to still be a concern at this point.
I, when going back to the parking, um. It's something that I I would consider if we were inside of a stationary uh plan. Where people have strong access to really viable. Public transportation, there will be a a bus, a fifty-six hundred bus.
Oh, is that a maybe?
It's in, it's in the.
I'm, can't, I'm cynical.
We do have. The the um, we we do have the the fifty-six hundred bus in the plan, that's in the plans. Uh and wouldn't it be beautiful to have a track spur going right down the middle of fifty-six all the way to the airport? I mean, right, we'd love that, but. But we've gotta look at what's in front of us, and I don't feel comfortable reducing the parking numbers yet.
Can I ask a question of the council as well? If we come back and the city's participating on the commercial piece, are, is there any interest in shared parking between the commercial and the residential? Uh because they're, they're offset, they're they're being hours.
I don't have an issue with it. Yeah, there's no way to stop it, so we might as well.
But as a justification for reduced parking, is that something the council would consider at that point?
Well, you have to show us, because if I look on here, if you took out, you know, a hundred and, you know, let's say a hundred and forty spots. I can look on your future drawing and show that that's gonna go into a huge part of this, so we'd have to just kinda see how you plan it.
I mean, if there's a parking garage on the commercial side, absolutely.
That's, that's actually the point I was just gonna make.
Structured parking costs about four times per spot, what that grade parking cost is.
Or meet in the middle, what's what's the number we're looking at, two hundred?
Yeah, two hundred.
So maybe just cut a hundred.
Two hundred and change, maybe meet in the middle, that might be, I wa- I just wanted to mention for the council, something I mentioned to to these guys at lunch when when we talked offline. Was um the this this UDOT, and it goes to the point that Corbin made too about the city's participation in this and how that's all gonna work out. With this deed restriction that's on that UDOT parcel, that it has to be open space and and yada yada, it has to be city. Uh maintained or or whatever it is, it's it's kind of a. It's, it kinda puts the city into a crappy corner, if you will, because like to Councilmember Green's point. And this is like I said, when when we um, when we talked about this before, that's gonna be a really nice amenity for the people who live there. It's really what it's gonna be, it's gonna be a nice little private public park. Publicly maintained private park, right? Even though it is a public park, even though it's a public right away, it's a public, the public can go there. I will have the right to go and, you know, string my hammock up between two trees and read a book. Or, you know, surf on my phone, because who are we kidding? It's it's not something people are gonna do, it's just, it's just not, no, maybe they'll run through a path there if they start at the park and they're going for a three or four or five mile run. And that route, like your, you know, your path map.
They're gonna run the Arctic Circle.
I I run through the, I run through the apartment, speaking of, speaking of apartments proposed by this specific company, I run through the the, on the path. That runs through the uh affinity fifty-six apartments, I run through that path several times a week. Just because it goes where I want to run and I don't feel too bad doing it, but, so running through, yes, but is this access where a family's gonna come? And park their car and spend their lunch hour, no, it's it's just not, it's it's a really nice amenity for the people who live there, the parking exacerbates it. That's just, that's just what, that's just fact, to me, that's just fact, whether it is or not.
One, one point of clarification on that, the uh it would be maintained by this project, city would not maintain.
Not, not city maintained, okay.
Yeah.
Just city liability if anything gets wrong.
Comment just about parking is um with a project this size, uh the.
That over Georgia.
The project itself could handle parking enforcement, whether that be permits given per unit. So we could really lock that down as far as what is, what is allowed.
I wonder how that would happen, how that would work, though, I mean, I I got, I get it, but your guest parking is not gonna be, right? And your guests are gonna be allowed to overnight stay if they, you know, m- mother-in-law comes in from out of town. She gets to stay in the spare bedroom or on the couch, or in my bed and I get sleep on the couch, whatever it might be.
Right.
Right?
But but I'm just saying, enforcement uh on a project this size can can be and has been done successfully.
With a property management company who is.
Exactly, yeah.
Visitor parking is, anybody staying overnight has to register, or they are towed.
Okay, you get a, and get a visitor pass and then you say.
To have a registered license plate, and because of the the issue that you just outlined.
Okay, and then you could say for the uh, for the public parking spaces for the park, no permitted cars are allowed. No permitted cars are allowed there. You gotta go park in your permitted spot, right?
Correct. We can, and we can easily delineate between the two that we have trailhead parking, that's, that's accessible, that people understand that they are parking.
But is that, is that enforceable? And maybe this is an attorney question. Is that enforceable? Let's say I live in the, in the corner lot, the furthest away from that park and I'm a little bit hobbled because I sprained my ankle because I was running through this parking trip. And I want to drive over to the park and spend my afternoon at the park. And then drive back. I can't do that now because my car is not allowed to park in the public parking spots. Right? So is that a violation of my rights as a West Jordan citizen who happens to live here?
Obviously, there, there's nuances with parking, but, but with a project this size, enforcement can be done. And, and, and it's done successfully in many other projects in the city and, and in, in the valley. So I, I mean. Parking is a concern. It's, we've heard your concerns loud and clear. We'll take a look at it. But we can enforce because it is a rental. We have the control. We can do all this sort of stuff. So. And, and, and it won't spill over to neighbors because it is isolated.
I guess ultimately, if, if you got all of your units rented out and you can't, or say three quarters of them rented out, but you don't have any more parking spots. That's, that's on you, right? So that's a point.
And, and, and to.
They wouldn't rent, yeah.
Or further contextual, that's just kind of what I'm saying. I, I see this as a really nice amenity for the people who live there and that's really kind of what it's going to boil down to. Yeah, with some public access, but it's, it's a really nice amenity for the people who live there. But I'm okay with that. For the most part. I don't, I don't think, I think talking about not liking the project because that's not as public as. Maybe U dot thinks it should be and we're meeting the letter of the law, but maybe not the spirit of the law. I'm still okay with that. I still think we're, I still think your, your project is about the right thing for this spot. I, I, is it perfect? No, but is any project perfect? You're at about the right density. You're a little less dense than the one we just talked about on Redwood Road, right? But you're on major arterial street, two major arterial streets. You're at the right corner. You're. You're three blocks from, from uh, Mountain View corridor. So you're in the interchange. You know, as long as we do both pieces, right? So for me, the project makes sense. It's a good buffer between the single family and the commercial, the future commercial, the someday commercial. It, it, it fit, it checks all the boxes for me, even with that, I'm just saying that, that selling me on the idea that, oh, this is a great public amenity. No, it's not.
Well, in some context on that, that little piece, the U dot piece is encumbered with so many um, utilities. I mean, the city has a huge line running down there, multiple things. I mean, to, to do anything on that piece other than an open space and some park. I mean, you're really, you're really hand, handcuffed that way. So, but yes, we, we agree with you there. That's why it would be maintained by the project.
I, I generally, overall, generally agree with what council member Jacob just said. What I'm wondering is if. Down in here, right along fifty six hundred west, I mean, there's a sidewalk, there, there's a trail right there that, that ties in and stuff. Would, would it be appropriate to have some sort of monument sign? That says, and we, we designate the name of that trail or, or we just put a sign that says West Jordan City Trailhead. Uh, public welcome or something on that, that says that, just something that at least. Invites Pete. I mean, I agree with him. This is going to, I think the amenity is going to be used more by. The, the residents of that area, uh, of that, that complex. But I would like to be able to, that if these, these people that live across the street, that they get a message. Um, that you're welcome to come across here and if there were a sign. Uh, some things there that, that, that's not going to cost that much to put a sign there that says, this is a West Jordan City Trail. Come on in. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I, I think there's been enough discussion about this trail. I would remind all of you that it's a marketing. It's a joint marketing project with you and I hope you have a guide to all your trails. I hope you have a map. I hope in your social media that you send out that this is a trail. Uh, it's dedicated to the community. Now, we, we plan on having signage up there, you know, the trailhead. But uh, i- i- it's gotta be a joint venture. W- w- we're not going to do all the work of the council. Uh, uh, on marketing and I think uh, Corbin and we'd get together with your social media and we'd put out. We'll put out the notes, we'll give them to you, but that's, I don't think.
Kelvin, they could put a big sign like the one you like on Redwood, the big dog paw, paw.
And then park here. Councilman Bedore, we really were under, we needed to find out where you were on the density. Every time we go back and we do more drawings, it's another ten, fifteen grand. And so we, we got your message, but we didn't want to put it all in there. At this point, if we weren't going to be able to move on the project itself. So we apologize. But it's a, i- i- it's a matter of prudent finances.
But that, though, you could have said it when we were going through. By the way, this will be here. You didn't have to draw out a sentence worth of words, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, if you go back to those renderings earlier, uh, concepts, you can see in there, I don't know who's controlling the.
My thing that, that I'm slightly concerned about, and it, it's something that can go over pretty easily, but I look at all this park space and I know that if. Say I had a child living in these apartments, I have, that is a lot of park space right between things. Someone going out to a car near that area and stuff like that. It becomes now a weirder kind of. Area for me as a parent I look at. And that's, that was the point I was trying to make to you guys when we met, that I wanted to see something that showed me this is a. Safe area as well. It's, you know, it's, it's not like little spaces near other places where your car is parked. This is like a big area where. Things could happen and I hate to even bring that up, especially in thoughts of my own children. So that was why I was saying. Please be thinking about those things and let us know that you're thinking about those things. Brought up the same kind of thing when it comes to like. Uh, you know, you have a ton of Tesla cars and that's what I brought up. Are you guys planning on putting any electric stations?
That was my question to them.
And you said, yeah, we are thinking about that. Well, cool. Well.
Glad I wasn't the only one that brought it up.
You know, a, a sentence would have said, oh, and by the way, we're talking about parking, da, 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 da. Um, sometimes it's better coming to the council to say. We've thought of just about everything rather than what questions do you have so that we. Get the feeling of you might not have added that if we hadn't asked the question. So that, that's why when we had the pre-meeting, that, that was the point I was trying to make and, and you've done a lot of good. I, I like this project. I'm not trying to say I'm down.
Sure.
I'm just saying.
And that's a good point. We actually thought we'd be doing a presentation instead of having rapid fire questions. That's what we were going to do. Uh, and present that and talk about the EV and talk about.
Would you like to do a presentation?
Yeah, it's a little light now, but that's.
Bring in the balloons.
Taylor did it.
We kind of got.
Okay, well, then I'll give you that then.
But I think we hear your concerns and that's what we're here to do. I mean, we're at a thirty thousand foot. You have this thing.
And I'm walking in the park. So, and so we're, we're in different, different heights right now.
So I want, I want you to be aware that we have received a letter from one resident so far and, and the point that they made, I think is a valid point. That within a mile, we have a lot of apartments already. So just know that's out there and he had other points, uh, as well.
You've had one.
Just know.
One.
One.
Sure, okay.
Well, yeah, but this is our work.
We'll deal with that.
Just so that you know. As far as the park, we have lots of parks that are in neighborhoods that are buried and the public doesn't really use them. As far as a sign, I think if you were amenable, it'd be perfect to just put one of our blue and white West Jordan. Insignia little sign there that said trailhead. I don't see that as a big deal.
Big dog pawn sign.
We're not going with council member Lamb. He's being a little bit interesting. When, when, you probably know, being a lobbyist, Mr. Howe, when, when is fifty six really supposed to be coming? When is that coming and when do you plan to build these apartments?
Oh, when do we plan on?
Well, when, when is.
The process.
You're going to start building, okay? And um.
We have a few steps left.
When do you think, when do you think, what, from what your knowledge is, when is fifty six rapid transit supposed to be there? When's that bus coming?
When you talk, when you talk to UTA, you get mixed answers, but this will as. But they have been pretty good to work with in the past. We, we got some things done. And by the way, when we got this approved, we. Got you two more pieces of property that have been out there for two and three years. And we pulled that all in from UDOT, so you got a three for, for one. On this project, it really is.
Can you tell us what you're talking about? Cause I see blank faces all around. What do you mean you got us property?
Pieces of.
Counsel, I could inject on the UTA item if you'd like.
Yes, please.
It will not be a, a rapid transit. It'll be an express bus and it's in the environmental stages right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And then you, you had some pieces of property that you hadn't uh, finished the deal on and I can't remember exactly where they were. I wish Dave Clements was here. But when we got the whole package, UDOT said, well, will you, it's time you take these. Cause they'd been on the registry to have them done for two or three years. And Corbin, I don't know if you know Scott, what it was, but Dave.
That would be the blank faces.
We put that, we put that all in one package. So you got those in there. There were pieces, small pieces of property that had been sitting out there for.
I knew she wasn't talking about my blank face. I always look like this, so.
So let me, let me just go back to, this was in, going to be in the presentation. I think you brought up a good point, Councilman Bedore. With regards to safety. Um, Nico uh, can explain this of why we put it inside. Where there can be eyes out in that pathways. There can be individuals and Nico explains it really well. But we took that very serious about the safety of single females, anyone who would be vulnerable in that community. And it, it was a brilliant plan and these guys have done fabulous uh, projects before. Boyer and then FFKR. Preston is one of their premier architects. And we were actually going to introduce everybody, but we got right into the heart of it. So we're ready to go. Is there any other?
Can I do another rapid fire? Yeah, just to insert it. Sorry about that. Thanks so much. These are, this is really good feedback for us because, you, you know, Scott isn't joking. We, Preston would love for us to keep spending ten or fifteen thousand dollars every time we talk to him. We may be a little less so, so, but it's been great. But uh. We um, one thing to note on the BRT or the bu, the bus rapid transit is that. The day that we put a shovel in the ground at the project, hopefully if it's approved at some point, that we're two years out. So really that, that's one thing I just want to keep in mind is that that's when we put a shovel in the ground and right now the economic conditions are pretty challenging. We have a long entitlement period ahead of us. You saw how many things we have to submit and solve in order for this project to go forward. So I would not be surprised if by the time we actually have this fully leased, we're honest, we're honestly talking about four to five years. So when we're thinking about high density residential and the potential for available um, public transit. Which if there was public transit on fifty six west, even at any point, and if it's within five years, our residents will absolutely be using it. Without a doubt, because it would be a very amenable form of public transportation. So if we think that BRT is coming online within five years. We would say that, we would, we would ask the council to take that into consideration as we think about uh, public transportation. And variances or modifications to potential parking, which we can, there's a whole section of the code that goes through. Potential modifications to, to parking and what factors in there and public transportation being one of them, so.
And then I would just add on the parking thing and I think it was brought up, you know, we, we came in with another concept. So we met with the staff. Earlier, thought maybe the parking ratio at one point six four or whatever it was, one point six one might be a little too dense. We reduce the density, you know, we've kind of pulled things back to a one point seven one um, stall per unit, which is more in line with. Other suburban, higher density projects that we, that we do all the time. Um, so we're, so really we're just. Kind of trying to get a gauge of, you know, is the, you know, is that that number that you guys feel comfortable with too? Or is it, you know, one point seven one, one point eight, one point, you know?
Well, I think we need to get more data to them.
Yes.
We, we, you know.
More data would be good. Clearly, we're very sensitive with parking due to our experience with residents. So more data is always the best. Besides the parking, I'm definitely in favor of something like this. I think this is one of the more ideal locations for a high density. Because of where it's at. And I really appreciate the effort that's gone into the design, the layout, et cetera. Um, and my only feedback was what I've already discussed previously is the open space needs to be more developed and not like, here's natural. And turn into weeds and ticks and.
You don't want native plants?
I'm okay with native plants. They're not the native weeds.
Yeah, you know, where we live, where, where, where um, Councilmember Jacob and I live, that whole natural concept is a huge fail. And we want to make sure that we're not making that mistake again.
When you talk about density, I prefer the five sixty number instead of the five nine, the five ninety number.
So twenty, so just to confirm twenty nine, twenty, about twenty nine units per acre is something that you'd feel more comfortable with over thirty one?
I do.
Okay. We would love to get feedback on that. That helps really guide our whole process.
I can go either way. I'm, I can hear arguments either way, so.
The five sixty number also helps the parking situation we're talking about. I mean, that's. Could be another sixty parking spots right there that we'd feel better about. So I'm on the five sixty. I agree that this is, this is a. A plot of land that is perfect for this. I, I think for the most part, you've done a, a great job putting it together, but. A little bit more and we'd be, we'd be there and geez, ten thousand a drawing. You are. You are one of the better artists I've ever known, so. I'm going to go change all of my life plans right now.
That occurs to me about every time I deal with anybody.
Something that I believe I mentioned when I met with you, Scott. Was uh, I am more in favor of owner occupied than, than rental.
Sorry, I didn't hear that. Can you say that again?
I'm more in favor of owner occupied housing than, than rental. It's, but. I'd like to just get your thoughts on that. Is, is owner occupied not feasible or maybe even a portion of it? Uh, does that hurt the parking stall numbers? Cause owner occupied is going to be more likely to have more parking spots needed, right?
Yeah.
Just, just get into the owner occupied versus rental for me.
Yeah, once you turn it over to an owner occupied, you're dealing with an HOA and y'all know how well HOAs function on enforcement of certain things. I mean, your hands are really tied on that. So by keeping it a rental um, product, you, you really have a lot more control over parking. Over the, the amenities, over maintenance, a, a lot, a lot more things. So, yeah.
So maybe on this, we keep it a rental, but maybe you could bring us in the near future some plans for some. You know, modest income hounds on small lots that people could own so they could build wealth.
I got one for you. I, I'm going to be here next month and you're going to love it.
I hope so. I hope I love what you're bringing me.
Next month?
Oh.
Yeah.
I, I, I can.
One eleven?
I can only guess about that one and I'll try not to.
The other, the other thing that we've, that is, and this is just in the last five, ten years with owner occupied is. They a lot of times end up becoming rentals and then you can't control it. You don't have that management.
So they're owner occupied, but the owner occupied rents it.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
And then they are their property managers and it's, it's a lot harder than.
And those become a mess.
We just, we don't want it to turn into a slum.
Yeah.
I'm okay with rentals. We, we need a mix and there are people that don't want to own. Now luckily. Some of us are able to own our own home and don't want to rent, but there are people not from West Jordan that will want to rent.
Well, I'm going to get, sorry, I'm going to get philosophical for a second. This is why, this is why you pay the big bucks. Just kidding.
Yeah, there we go.
This is why. Coming out, hey, careful, careful, this is going to cost you. This is why I send thousand dollars a drawing.
Now I forgot what I was going to say. So the reality is not to the point that people don't want to rent or own their own home. They just can't, you know, I mean, this is the only option for so many people right now. And what we try to do, you, you know, all I do is multifamily. I mean, I'm the principal over the Living Environment Studio at FFKR and that's all I do. I've been doing it for twenty years. And, and we look at every project as if this is going to be somebody's home. You know, we know that, that there are going to be rentals, they're going to be somewhat transient. But we try to provide amenities and, you know, community feel to, to, so that these are somebody's home and they feel that sense of community. And that hopefully that that reads through and what we've done here, we've got a lot of ground floor access units, people looking onto the parks. You know, this is, there's going to be a lot of ownership of this space, the public and the private, you know, of these. of this space, the public and the private, you know, of these residents, and that's really our goal, so.
I'll emphasize exactly what Preston's talking about. We're seeing senior citizens that this might be their very last home, and it would be in a rental situation. We're seeing young couples that this might be their starter home for a long time and still until they can save up that money to go in to buy a a single property, a lot. And the quality that you put in here, and I think we covered that in great detail from the appliances and and the the masonry and everything. This is going to be a high end project that people can feel comfortable living in.
Yeah, I think I think, though, just a general, so as a general, kind of put a lid on it, is I think I'm hearing most are in favor, at least okay with the density, more more or less. Devil's in the details when it comes to the parking and the and stuff like that, but we're not really discussing details right now. As you come back with more details, you know, when you're when you're coming up through the planning commission process and and all of that, we'll we'll hammer out the details. But I think for the most part, you're you're in the right neighborhood, so figuratively and literally, so.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yeah.
Can I ask that some clarifying questions of the council?
Yep.
And one clarifying comment. Larry pointed out to Scott and myself that the the IOZ code changed a little while ago that will not require this RDA's property be to be rezoned IOZ in order for this to be IOZ zoned. So they can be bifurcated, that particular decision. But what I really want to know from the council, their option on the triangle piece of land to acquire it from us, that option expires July first. I told them I wouldn't renew that option or extend that option until the council was okay with what was proposed. Are the majority of you in favor of extending that option for them for six more months while they continue their due diligence and entitlement process?
We can't make that decision because that's a redevelopment agency decision.
Okay. Well, I just want to know temperature. All right, second.
Yeah.
Are you okay with they require a partnership with the city on that New Bingham Highway UDOT piece? The city would, it was clarified by Jeff, the city would own it but not maintain it. In the city owning it, it has to be public available open space. But the HOA, we would have to enter into a contract with them that the HOA would maintain it in.
Not HOA, the management.
Or sorry, the management company. Good clarification. Yeah, thank you. The ownership group, yeah, yeah.
I guess the question would be, are you guys okay, let's say in five years from now, when the park's done, if to go in and pull out a pipe, you okay if us going in there and tearing it up?
That'll be in the contracts, yeah.
Yeah, that easement, that's the, yeah, they have no choice on that, right? The easements are there, and they're not trying to get rid of those easements.
I'm not okay when they come and rip up my front yard, let alone like this, so.
If it's city owned, how how does, like, somebody trips and falls in that park? What happens?
Yeah, we would, we would ask them to indemnify us as much as we possibly can, ask them to indemnify us. So it would depend on the nature of the liability claim. If it was due to negligent maintenance, where they are maintaining the property, we would ask them to indemnify us in that regard. I don't know if we can fully get out of that liability of being the owner, but we would sure try. And then the third, whether our property, our our RDA property has to be rezoned or not, they do kind of have to to use the IOZ zone, have the support of us as property, adjacent property owners to access the IOZ as a zoning designation. Are the more majority of you in favor of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that really unlocks the economic potential of that property.
Yeah.
Especially with us coming in first.
I I think so, and I I I just, I'm I'm holding my breath because how many times have we heard, well, we put all that commercial on at fifty six hundred and seventy eight, so we're not going to put any down here at ninety, sorry. But I'm hoping that we don't, you know, I'm I'm hoping that with the RDA and with the IOZ in place, that we can have a little more a little more in control of our own destiny right there.
Yeah, definitely. And and as you know, some of the players that we've brought in and have been dealing with, they want rooftops. And and this definitely helps that.
Oh, and I I've definitely heard that, so. All right. Are you guys crystal clear as mud?
Now we're ready for your presentation.
All right.
But probably is there anything else you want to tell us that your presentation had that we didn't hear?
Or any other questions that we might answer for you or direction?
Always this, not sure. We were told that it is IOZ already there, and what we're asking for is the interchange overlay zone to be put on top of it. So is everybody in agreement with that?
That's IOZ, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How is the overlay?
It's a, it's a, it's an area. It's an IOZ area that can that can have IOZ.
We've we've had.
We're okay with giving.
A lot of opinions on that from different people.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we're all on the same page on that. We'll get the overlay, and you support that, and everybody's there.
Yeah.
I think that that's probably the the last one that we had on the list, other than please reach out, and we will see you in a month. Yeah, if anyone needs another coffee, we.
Oh, yeah, we can pass those down. Oh, we can keep these? That's that's okay. I have enough firewood started. Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you, guys. Always good to see you. Did I knock over my name? Oh, nobody knows who I am. All right, we'll give you guys a minute to clear out here, and then we'll bring up a couple other guests. We'd like to, we'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda. If you want to keep talking, keep walking. The mayor likes to call it a walkie talkie. Feel free to call me if you have any questions. All right. Our next item is a discussion on the Utah Community Renewable Energy Act. And before we get into this, I just want to give a little disclaimer. One of the organizations that is heavily in favor of this act is a company, a company, a nonprofit group called O2 Utah. At least that's their, probably their official name, and they're working on a new name with a rebrand, but O2 Utah is a client of mine personally with my my business, so I've been hired by them to actually work on this topic with other cities. Just so everybody knows, I don't get paid more. I don't get paid, O2 Utah doesn't get paid based on cities getting in or out of this agreement. They're just interested in good things for the environment. That's why they lobby for it. That's why they hired me to lobby for it with other cities. Just so you know, I don't get paid more. They don't get paid more. Nobody gets paid anything based on whether West Jordan does this or doesn't do this. I'm here as a council member, and that's all. Now, I happen to know a little bit about the project because of this, so there you go. I just wanted to get that out there front and center. Does anybody have a problem with me participating in this discussion? Okay, thank you. Now, with that having been said, can I introduce it? Let me, let me, let me take a stab at this, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong.
You don't have a presentation. Just kidding.
Right? They actually do have a presentation. Oh, well, you know what? Let's let me let you guys present. That's good. So who we have here, by the way, we have Christopher Thomas from Salt Lake City. He's on staff at Salt Lake City. So he's the guy who gets paid to deal with this stuff. And then we have Mayor Jeff Silver Strini from Silva Strini. I bet you hate that when people say silver, don't you?
That's always been, that happens my whole life, so it's fine.
Just like when I.
You know, just don't call me late for dinner.
Right? When people call me Jacobs, you know, that same thing. But Mayor Silva Strini from from Mill Creek, who is on the board, and Mill Creek's representative on the board that that steers the the CREA. So with that said, Chris, do you want to lead us?
Yeah, well, let me just say, first of all, thanks for having us, and and our reason for being here is kind of like by invitation. We're not here to sell you on this. I mean, my community is convinced in the program so far, and and I've got a lot of positive feedback from our residents. We're going to talk about why we think this might be a good idea, but it's up to you guys, and and legislation opened up a window for other cities to join this where it had kind of closed before. So it's really just like, if you're interested in it, cool, and we'd love to have you. But we're doing it anyway, so. I'm going to turn this over to Christopher because he has a presentation, and then feel free to answer any questions. We're here to answer your questions if we can.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. Again, my name is Christopher Thomas. As the chair said, I work for Salt Lake City in the Sustainability Department. I'm also an alternate board member on the URC board. Okay, so Utah Renewable Communities is a coalition of eighteen communities who are partnering with Rocky Mountain Power to design a new clean energy program. And we aim to offer customers a choice to supplement their current energy mix with additional clean energy at a minimal cost increase with a goal to achieve net one hundred percent by twenty thirty. And our philosophy is we work to empower our community members to be the change for a sustainable tomorrow.
I'm sorry to interrupt you so quickly. What is, what do you mean by net one hundred percent by twenty thirty?
Yes, briefly, it basically means that we'll look at the energy consumption of everybody who's participating in the program. And so that's like, you know, we'll say it's a hundred thousand megawatt hours over the course of a year. Will our program will make sure that there's a hundred thousand megawatt hours of clean energy in that same year coming into our grid. So it's not meeting the energy on an hour to hour basis, but it's saying over the course of a year, we're matching the consumption with generation from clean sources.
So the program will actually be working with Rocky Mountain Power to acquire additional renewable energy resources, solar, geothermal, and wind power primarily, which is our, which are our options, and will be providing, acquiring enough of those to make sure that the residents and businesses that participate in the program are getting a hundred percent renewable energy effectively. There's there's always going to be, until we figure out better technologies about storage. So, you know, either battery storage, pumping water back up and to run it through hydropower generation facilities again, which is feasible. We'll always be needing to burn fossil fuels at night and when it rains or when there's a blowing, but if we generate enough renewable energy, we'll we'll be able to A, wean ourselves of some of that, and B, be able to use that excess energy for the storage.
Can I I kind of think of it as a kind of like a carbon foot, carbon offset thing, like, you know, you buy an SUV, but then you buy acreage in the rainforest to plant so many trees. So you're offsetting your carbon with that. That's kind of how I look at it, is like if this, if the city opts in and and we allow our residents to be in this program, then, you know, we consume so many megawatts of electricity, we make sure that so many megawatts of electricity are being produced that are clean energy. Now, whether that specific bolt of lightning comes to this specific house, that's really not controllable, right? But you make sure that the one equals the one is kind of the goal, is the long term.
Yep, but Rocky Mountain Power pulled out of this project.
Yes, we're going to talk about that, I think.
Yes.
Yes or no? We'll explain that.
Yes, exactly. So there is a backdrop that I did want to just mention briefly of of what's going on with Rocky Mountain Power and, to some extent, utilities more generally. So last fall, there was news that Rocky Mountain Power is facing a pretty significant financial judgment related to wildfires in Oregon. Rocky Mountain Power i- is really Pacificor, and Pacificor sells power both in in Oregon, Washington, California, but also Idaho, Wyoming, Utah. So they do business as Rocky Mountain Power in Utah. So that judgment in Oregon still affects us because it affects Pacificor. So that that's a big deal. And in fact, recently Warren Buffett, because it goes all the way up through Berkshire Hathaway Energy to Berkshire Hathaway, said, until we get this wildfire liability thing worked out, we're not given more money to to for you to construct more power plants. But it's a pretty unique situation that that we're in. Also, in April, Rocky Mountain Power changed its plans pretty radically and said they're really dialing back their renewable energy plans and delaying their plans till after twenty thirty. For those that are, you know, interested in climate related issues, twenty thirty is a really important goal where we've got to make some pretty significant pollution reductions. So that that was disheartening to clean energy advocates. But nevertheless, our program is still moving forward. There was some, an inaccurate story out there that had said, oh, because Rocky Mountain Power is not, is has stopped their renewable energy procurement effort, that somehow that meant they were stopping working with us, but that wasn't correct. And so we worked with that news outlet to to correct the story. So yes, we're still working with Rocky Mountain Power to move forward. It's just that we're kind of having to do more of the heavy lifting than we thought we would be.
So that, so basically, initially, the idea was that Rocky Mountain Power would be acquiring a lot of these new renewable resources. And if they're going to back off, that means that we can still do that, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We are, in fact, going to be be soliciting bids on companies building that kind of project, and Rocky Mountain Power may still be involved in purchasing those, but we're, we are moving forward, even though it it looks like they're backing off. We're not, we're not letting them back off, and the and the legislation that was passed gives us the authority basically to do that. We just have to do more of the work of issuing our own request proposal for renewable resources.
So what, you know, why are the eighteen communities that are part of this effort currently, why are they, why are we doing it? I think top among that list is having some choice. Usually, when you're served by a, you know, a monopoly investor owned utility, you don't get any choice. They get the choice. They go to the regulators. If they get approved, they move forward with their plan. This program would at least allow some, some choice for residents to to help create a cleaner energy mix. Again, I mentioned for those interested in in climate issues, it's important to make progress on that by twenty thirty, and our, that's how our program is designed to, we want to add new renewable energy or clean energy by twenty thirty. Some of our communities just really like clean energy, and they want to make sure that, you know, to the extent we can, we're part of that movement of of building clean energy in that economy. Also reducing air pollution, you know, not just climate pollution, but the other kinds of air pollution that, you know, create ozone, that create PM two point five inversions. This will reduce that kind of pollution regionally and, to some extent, here along the Wasatch Front as well. And as we've looked at the other clean energy programs that are available to Rocky Mountain Power customers, no other program is as impactful for as many people as what our program aims to be. So how are we going to do this? As the mayor said, our program will look to acquire utility scale clean energy, and our, the net one hundred goal is to match participating consumption by twenty thirty. We're hoping to host a competitive solicitation this year. As I mentioned, Rocky Mountain Power terminated their ongoing solicitation, so we're going to do our own. We we have to do it with Rocky Mountain Power. Everything about this program by law has got to go through and with Rocky Mountain Power, so they'll be part of that, but 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 it will be our solicitation. And importantly, these projects, these new utility scale clean energy projects, they will have to interconnect with the Pacificor Transmission System. So we're not looking to pay for things that are happening, you know, east of the Mississippi or somewhere else. We're looking to support clean energy development so have a direct impact on the grid that we use as Rocky Mountain Power customers. And of course, we are looking for resources that can come online by the end of twenty twenty nine. So where might these resources be? They could be connected anywhere to the Pacificor Transmission System, which is all those gray lines that are kind of going across the west. More realistically speaking, the resources that we'd acquire would likely be in Wyoming, Idaho, or Utah, because they just don't face as many transmission challenges getting from where they're generated to where we're using it. What could this look like? We need to redo these calculations because, like I said, Rocky Mountain Power's plan has changed. Also, if we have more communities joining us, these numbers will change. But we're looking at about one point two million megawatt hours annually of new renewable energy buildout. That's about what you'd expect from two, two hundred megawatts of solar in Utah and two hundred megawatts of wind in Wyoming. We're not locked into that. That's just an illustration of what it could look like. Megawatt hours, yes.
Council Chair, I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Mayor.
On the earlier slide, it mentioned.
On the earlier slide, it mentioned choice. I believe currently our residents have a choice. They can log it, sign up for the Blue Sky Program right now. Is that not correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that is correct. The difference though is that the, the Blue Sky Program is a, is not an electricity product program. It's a certificate program. So that means they buy, uh, things called renewable energy certificates that are produced anywhere west, west of the Mississippi, anytime within the last fifteen years. And that counts toward the program. And so I think we're, you know, and I think that served a, a real purpose, especially initially. But we feel strongly that our program's got to be electricity. That we're, we want to add new, uh, energy to our grid. And that is not the primary, uh, purpose of the Blue Sky Program.
The other difference, Mayor, is that, um, at least historically, the Blue Sky Program has been used to do a lot of good in, in putting solar generating, uh, you know, panels and, and that kind of facility on specific buildings, um, around our state and around our region. I know that Cottonwood Heights City Hall's solar panels were, were, uh, put on it with, with a grant. The solar panels that cover Mill Creek City Hall were furnished with Blue Sky Grant. So those are producing electricity that benefit, uh, you know, the taxpayers of Mill Creek because our city hall is basically running on solar power, um, at least a percentage of that. But they aren't putting power into the grid the way this program would, where residents can actually benefit from that clean power.
Okay, but I understood the, the Blue Sky does reduce energy consumption in other areas by using renewable energies. Is that true?
Yeah, sure, it is true. And you know, and when they, when, when their projects generate, uh, solar power for Cottonwood Heights or I think Bluffdale City Hall or Fire Station has solar panels that they paid for, it's obviously reducing their consumption of, of, of electricity from the grid, which, which, you know, to the extent that that electricity is generated with fossil fuels, it's reducing the, the fossil fuel component of that overall. But it's not doing a, a utility wise and enterprise level power generation like this program would do. This program would actually, you know, have, have proposers build big wind farms, big solar farms that would put solar onto the grid that individual residents would be able to, to use when they plug their, their, uh, their toaster or their, their, you know, iron or refrigerator in.
Hair dryer, right?
I got you.
Hair dryer.
Or maybe shaver. I, I go with the analogy that Counsel Chair Jacob mentioned, uh, how you save it over here, even though it's not directly affecting you over there. But okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I believe that Counsel Member Jacob beat you to a dad joke.
Yeah, well, Dirk and I kind of trade off on who gets to take the lead on those. But yeah, it, uh, Mayor, you're, you're, you're right in that it, you know, it's, it's a similar style program. This is just enterprise level. This is, this is a, a bigger, more direct impact on the grid than the Blue Sky Program. Blue Sky Program is a little bit more like the, the carbon offset that you might buy, you know, to, to offset your private jet.
And, and Doug, I mean, we, 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 I fully support the Blue Sky Program. I've been a member of that for, you know, when they started it. It's a great program, but this does something a little bit different.
But with Blue Skies, the individual resident gets to choose. With your program, they don't get a choice, right?
No, that's not correct. So, so the way this will work, if it's, and we'll talk, we could talk about this more about the, the process that, that remains to be done for those communities that are a member of this agency right now is we're, we're going through the process of working with Rocky Mountain Power about a rate structure and, and we're going to be issuing a request for proposals for, for facilities to be built to generate power. Once we know from the public service, the Public Service Commission will, will get a rate application and they will, um, establish a tariff, establish a rate for what this will cost our residents, what additional costs they'll pay for that. When we get that information, okay, each community that's a member of this agency will have the opportunity to say, whoa, that's too much money. We don't want that. Or it's reasonable, we're in. And, and each, each council and, and members of the, of the agency will have to actually adopt an ordinance by, you know, by a council vote to opt into the program. You're not bound in this until, until the council does that. That's like the last step. When that happens, then a mailing goes out over three billing cycles, three different mailings to all of the customers in, on, in Rocky Mountain Network. And, and, and people can opt out and they can say, no, I don't want that. Now, this is an opt out program rather, rather than, um, so everybody is going to be in it unless they opt out, right? So it, it is, it, it does require an affirmative action by, uh, uh, electricity customers say, I don't want to be in this. But they can do that and the, and the mailings that we're required to send out. And that will be the only one thing. We'll do other stuff on our social media or all that stuff. But we'll try to reach people to, um, inform them of how to do that if they don't want to participate. And, and then the other thing that, that goes along with this that, um, that is important is that there, that, that, the statute, the legislation that the state passed also requires that we implement a low income program. So we have to give, give a break to people that can't afford this if they qualify for that. And there are a number of options that we have considered as communities that are participating in this. And if any other community wants to join, we would help you with that because we're, we're way ahead on that, right? We would help you develop a low income program that would be suitable for West Jordan residents that, um, could either help subsidize some of, uh, some of the extra cost to them or, um, ease the burden of opting out if they find out that they can't afford it. So there's a lot of things that need to be done like that and, and catch up if you decided to join this, but we would help you with that. And then, um, I think, uh, the last thing is, we don't know for sure yet, right? We have to find this out, but our current best estimate of the additional cost of this program to our residents for a regular residential customer is, is somewhere between an additional two to seven dollars a month. So, I mean, that, that's, that's, that may be a lot of money for some people. It's not a lot of money for, uh, for a lot of other people. And I can just tell you that, um, in terms of the feedback that I've received in Mill Creek and our communities may be different on this, but we also have, you know, we have, not unlike West Jordan, we have, we have, you know, a more affluent east side and a, and a, and very less affluent west side. We go all the way Jordan River and the west side of Mill Creek is not an affluent community. But, but we have had people from all parts of our community support this and tell us that they want it. And I've actually had people, you know, people saying, look, you know, I don't have, I may not be as rich as the people who live in Lepis Cove, but don't design something that I can't be a part of because this is important to me. It's important to me and it's important to my kids. So that, you have to gauge that sentiment in your own community about whether you think your constituents would be supportive of this. But I can tell you from my constituents, heard a lot more people, you know, wanting us to do this than not, than not wanting us to do this. And there is that safety valve for them to get out if they don't want to do it. So, sorry, I maybe stole it.
I think that's the rest of the presentation right there.
I think it is. We could stop right there.
It's, except there's an ongoing cost to the city besides the opt out, opt in.
So the cost to the city is not ongoing, okay? It is, um, what, what we have had to do in order to get this program up and running. So what we've had to do to do that, we needed to have legal counsel to be able to negotiate with Rocky Mountain Power and to help those of us who don't have a great deal of expertise in the power industry, right? And I've learned a lot about it since we've been involved. But we, we, we decided to, um, essentially assess ourselves, those that, communities that participated, a fee paid over two fiscal years. Um, and for Mill Creek, it was about thirty six thousand dollars each year, um, for two years. And we've used that money, we raised seven hundred thousand dollars that way, um, to pay for attorneys and, um, and for a, um, an energy power consultant to be able to help us make sure that we're, you know, you know, not getting, take advantage of a Rocky Mountain Power and that we have folks with expertise that understand all this stuff when mayors and city council people may not as much. And then we've also hired a public relations firm just to help us put together some materials to, to explain this program. So, so we did that and we would ask you to do the same thing because it's only fair if we did it that you're, you know, you did it. But it's not a, it's not a ton of money. And, you know, I'll tell you in my community, we, we, um, when we started this out, we wanted to make it easy for communities. So we had, um, this, this regular assessment. And like I said, it was thirty six thousand dollars over two fiscal years. So thirty six thousand one year, thirty six thousand another for a total of what seventy two thousand dollars. We, Mill Creek also decided to pay more to be what was called an anchor community because we wanted to make sure that, um, that we would, that this program would, would, would go. And we didn't know if all the communities were going to sign up when we started out. And frankly, every, every one of them did. So, so we were in good stead on that. But, but we actually in Mill Creek had residents donate money to, so that we would be an anchor community. We, we had residents donate, what, twenty five thousand, something like that, twenty, maybe thirty thousand dollars. Because our community was so, members of our community were so committed to this. So, um, anyway, yeah, but there's no ongoing obligation for the city beyond that, beyond that, those initial, two initial payments.
And then the noticing requirement. We have to reimburse Rocky Mountain Power on the backend. Once we're all the way in and we get to that last point where Rocky Mountain Power is sending out notices, we have to reimburse them for the cost of mailing to our city, which I think we estimated.
And we've already raised that money as part of what we assessed, assessed every participating community. So we've already paid that. So even the noticing cost is in the bank.
I think, I think the noticing is extra though.
Is it? Okay.
Noticing for, at least for the new cities is, was going to be extra.
Well, yeah, new cities will have to, I mean, we, we think, we think it's fair that if new cities want to join, that they pay something equivalent. Now, what, what we did when we calculated what we paid, we did a big analysis of the population and also, um, the amount of power that was used in each community because some of that power is used by, by commercial or industrial users. When we, when we decided to, um, with the new legislation that allows other communities to participate, when we, when we came up with the program that we would offer to, to West Jordan or other cities, there are a couple of other cities that I'm presenting to and have expressed interest in this. We're only doing that based upon population because we just wanted to get something out to you quickly if you want to join. So we're not trying to, we're not, we're not calculating the electrical load that your community uses. That would also require you to help participate in that like we did in Rocky Mountain Power to get us that information. So that's why you decided, let's just do it on population. It's easier.
And, and adding cities to this is, uh, there is an additional financial load that will go into the, the constitution drafting, you know, interlocal agreement part of it and all of that. By us participating, that we are placing an extra burden on that. I just wanted to throw in just a little bit of context really quick. In two thousand nineteen, when, when H B four eleven was passed, West Jordan did pass an ordinance that we wanted to participate in this. So we, we were one of the first cities to, to raise our hands and say, yeah, we, we want to, we want a seat at that table. As, as that, that initial assessment, uh, started being talked about and we didn't know how much it was. We didn't know if there's going to be an ongoing cost. We didn't know what we were obligating our residents to. We didn't know, we had, we had more questions than answers. So there, there came a, an additional step that we had to take to stay in and we decided not to take that step. That was a couple of years after we passed that initial resolution.
So we have a number?
What's that?
Do you have a, a dollar amount now at this point?
We do have a dollar amount. It's, it's seventy something thousand is the dollar amount that West Jordan, it's, I don't have the exact number, but Chris, do you know?
I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head, but we've got a, uh, table, a payment table.
Seventy, seventy sounds right.
It's seventy something. It's, it's, it's something like thirty.
I believe it's two payments of seventy five thousand.
Yeah, there you go. Roughly seventy five thousand over two years. So it'd be thirty seven thousand dollars in the budget year that we're going to be talking about next. Item on the agenda and then thirty seven thousand in the year after that, roughly.
Mayor said fifty five over two years. Cause if it's population based, it's got to be a hundred and something thousand.
You said seventy five, didn't you, Dirk?
Yeah, seventy five over two years. So that's a hundred and fifty altogether.
Yeah, Mill Creek paid more because of their, uh, anchor community status. So there, it's not exactly equivalent.
I know one question that came up is, you know, does Salt Lake get more votes than West Jordan? So I, I thought, I think it's one thing that we would want to look at is, you know, if we're paying seventy five grand, a hundred and fifty grand, do we get less votes or do we get less, you know, interest in the program?
So, um, so there's a governance agreement that we drafted and I'll agree to. And, um, we would ask you to consider agreeing to that as well. Right, that, that, it's complicated because that changes. Right now, it's one community, one vote. So, I mean, um, what, Springdale has the same vote as, as Salt Lake City does and right now.
Is that, that, that's not the way it's always been. Salt Lake City had veto proof majority because they donated two hundred and some thousand dollars.
Not, not on, that's actually not correct, but it does change, it does change. If, when the program gets implemented, then the voting is going to be based upon the electrical load that a community uses. Because, and there was concern about some of the larger communities that they, that they, since they have the most at stake in their, and they're the biggest electrical load, that they have a weighted vote like that. So there, Ogden wanted to have that, okay? Salt Lake City wanted to have that. Frankly, Mill Creek wanted to have that. I mean, even though we aren't one of the, we aren't the biggest community by any means, I, I really, you know, would be concerned if a, a bunch of smaller communities that don't have as much at risk, basically, could, could wag the, that, that tail could wag the dog.
And I'll just add too, there's, the way, um, the way it's set up is, there's an initial vote, which is one vote per community. If two communities, um, want to challenge that vote, they can call for a weighted vote. Um, and so what the mayor is mentioning is once the program goes into effect, that weighted vote will be, uh, the weighting of the weighted vote will be determined by how much, uh, load is participating in each community. But the first vote is just one vote per community. Then there has to be two to.
So theoretically, West Jordan would actually be one of the larger players in this.
You would be the second largest if you joined. I mean, you're bigger than Ogden, so, um, yeah. So, and, and the other thing about the, the load, we don't know yet how many of our residents are going to opt out of this thing, you know? And so we felt that it, it made sense to, to use it, make the vote weighted based upon electrical load. Because if you have, you know, even, uh, even in Ogden could have, have, be using a more, more power than Salt Lake City if enough people in Salt Lake City opted out of the program. That, that was our thinking. That's, that's, that's our thinking about the, the governance. However, I'll just say that, um, I mean, I haven't ever felt that Salt Lake City was like trying to push its weight around to the contrary. They've been trying to, they've been very solicitous about trying to keep as many people in the program as they can.
And, and ideally, right, I mean, if you think about this big picture wise and environmental picture wise, ideally you want every city, right? You want every city to opt into this. Every city that's in Rocky Mountain Power's grid. And that's not every city, right? Murray doesn't get to opt in because they're not in Rocky Mountain Power. But you want every city that's in this footprint to opt in, in order for it to be the, the right thing environmentally speaking, right? That's, that's kind of the end goal of, of the idea. And the, the legislature's kind of plan, this is what the legislature does, right? They get this idea, but they don't want to upset too many people that write them campaign checks and things like that, uh, like Rocky Mountain Power. So they let the cities be the bad guy and say, we're going to force Rocky, we're going to force as cities, we're going to enforce Rocky Mountain Power to switch their power generation to renewable from coal and fossil fuels, right? So we, we've been kind of given this lever that, that we can pull. Now, do we want a seat at this table? Well, what if in, in my opinion, in my opinion, we do because, and by the way, I started working on this with these guys before I was hired by those guys. So I've been thinking about this for months and I was hired by them a week and a half ago.
I would say years.
Yeah, yeah. And I was hired by them a week and a half ago. So there you go. Anyway, I, uh, I forgot my train of thought now. I've, I've been thinking that we want as a city, we want a seat at a table. There's a, there's a, a kind of a de facto interlocal district being set up that will surround us and if we're, if we're not in it, we're losing a vote on things that might affect us in the future anyway.
I wouldn't say might. I think it's a very, it's going to affect us one way or another.
Well, and I, and I, and I don't mean necessarily from an environmental perspective as I do kind of a, a governance perspective, right? We see, how would, how would it be if West Jordan decided not to participate in U T A? I mean, how silly would that be when you can't get from South Jordan to Taylorsville unless you go through West Jordan? And yet we're not, we're opting out, right? So for me, it's, it's a seat at the table. We just paid how much money or authorized or talked about how much money for a lobbyist for a liquor store so we could be on that, at that table. Me, this is another table that we're the third largest city I think we should play.
This, this is the third time it's come up and it'll be a third time for me that it's a no. And the reason why, and I get everything that you're saying and I.
And the reason why, and I get everything that you're saying and I, I don't disagree with it, but seventy-five thousand dollars a year is another city employee. It, it's for the next two years.
Once over two years, so it's thirty-seven thousand a year.
It's seventy.
Seventy-five thousand a year.
Seventy-five thousand a year for the next two years.
Divided in two.
No. It's a hundred and fifty thousand.
I promise, I promise.
I, I have the application up in front of me right here and based on our population, I believe it would be just shy of thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for two years, so bringing the total contribution.
The mayor said it wrong.
To just a ride around seventy-five, seventy-six thousand.
The mayor, the mayor made it sound like it was seventy-five twice. That's, that's what we heard.
I, I did say seventy-five twice, so I stand corrected, I apologize.
Okay, that makes more sense.
And it feels better.
But I, but I do want to throw out, while I've got the floor for my day, even though I don't get a vote on this at this time, I did while I was on the council and did vote against it. I believe we're going this direction regardless whether this goes or not. I think if we could go the natural, let technology move us forward, we'll get to that point. And this is just to force it sooner and as we force it sooner, it makes it more cost, costly, it'll cost more money, it'll make our residents cost more. And I don't like the program where you're forced into it, then you can opt out of it. I think that's backwards and that takes advantage of people not following up on there and, and it's something they may not pay attention they were in. So I, I would, I, I, I'm opposed to it, but the choice is yours.
And, and mayor, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I'm not, I'm not gonna vote for a program that automatically, we don't even know the cost yet. And yes, we can still opt out again, but then we've just thrown seventy-five thousand dollars away. I'm, I'm not.
I think he was saying that individual residents can opt out.
Well, yeah, but we, the city can, if, if the, if the cost comes in, I think Mayor Silver Straney said the, the city can opt out again. If the costs come in, come in too high, but at that point, we still threw seventy-five thousand dollars away and I'm not, I'm not ready to, to spend taxpayer money on, on a wish or a hope or a dream. I, I'm just, and, and then we don't know what it's gonna cost, the, the individual utility bill. Could be from two to seven, it could be, it could be more. Building power generation plants or getting them from someplace else, we don't know what the cost of that's gonna be. I, I just can't support it. It, it, it's, it's just, it's, it's an unknown variable that and I, I haven't heard any, we've had a couple of residents four years ago when HB four eleven deadline was coming in, we had a couple of residents come in and have support for HB four eleven, but I haven't heard a whole lot of, uh, support from the rest of the residents that we need to jump on this and, and honestly, I'm not ready. I wanna provide some context too, but go ahead.
All right, the one thing I appreciate, both of you coming here tonight, is neither one of you said, join us now, West Jordan, get on this now. You guys came, you presented the information, you said how it's helping your city, you said why your city's doing it, I understand why Salt Lake's doing it. And I, I'm, I'm with the two of you, I want a seat at the table and I don't think it's a high cost. I don't think it's throwing away money, you know, you talk about, oh, we don't know, of course, we don't know and, and, but we're not throwing it out there on hope. We're throwing it out there on something that's already kind of been established, not just in Utah, but across the country, that we need clean energy, that we need to do something. And this puts us at that table and luckily, all of us have a different opinion and that's great.
Yeah, I just wanna say, just regarding the opt-in, opt-out thing, that, I kind of wrestled with that too. But it has to be this way for it to work. If you think about a, think about a bell curve and you think there's, there's, you know, your early adopters in your middle and your late adopters and things like that. You're gonna have a portion that would opt in, right? Like, let's say West Jordan has fifty thousand residents, you're gonna have five thousand that would definitely opt in to be like, heck yeah, I want this, I'm. You're gonna have five, ten, fifteen thousand, whatever, who opt out, you're gonna have a tail on this end that are, that are gonna take the step, do the proactive and opt out. But then you've got the bulk middle part who recognize like Mayor Silver Straney said, that it's, it's, uh, it's a good thing to do, that it's six dollars a month or whatever, five dollars a month is not gonna make or break my budget. By the way, if gas prices go up fifty cents, I pay six dollars a month for it. And gas prices go up and down a dollar at a whim, right, it seems, so. The, the price doesn't concern me too much and there's an opt-out for, or not an opt-out, but a credit for low-income people. So even those, you know, we, we always talk about the, the seniors or the, the fixed incomes or, or the retirees that are, that can't afford five dollars a month, I get that. There's a, there's a process for that. Uh, but for me, you need that middle, you need that bulk middle for it to work.
So what you're saying then is that the city has to come up with a subsidy amount to subsidize the, the, the electrical bills as well beyond what we, beyond the.
Subsidy, the subsidy wouldn't come from the city, the subsidy would come from all of the ratepayers, it's built into the two-to-seven-dollar-a-month extra charge. Ratepayers of the entire utility would be, that are participating in the program would subsidize low-income, it's not your city that would do that.
So it's not, and it's, it's, it really is not an ongoing expense. It really is one-time money, two, maybe three times when it comes with a noticing, that's it.
I'll speak, I think my biggest concern is for residents who might be caught unaware that they're even paying it at all. That they aren't looking at their bill closely enough. And I don't want to take advantage of that resident. I don't want to just.
I think it has to be publicized, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, but.
If it's in their bill, if it's publicized and we know it's going into it, if they're not reading their bill.
That's, we can say that's not our fault.
I'm not saying it's not our fault, but we can only do so much, but at the end of the day, this isn't just a short-term thing, this is long-term. We're looking at something that's gonna benefit our community and our state twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years down the road. And part of our values is creating a space here that's healthy, that's viable. And allows for us to have our long-term generations not suffer the effects of what we've already been seeing. I come from a family of severe asthma and living in Salt Lake is detrimental to our health. So if we can do something that's going to increase the health of our city, absolutely, that's worth it.
Well, let me, let me speak to that briefly, Kelvin, thank you.
Go ahead.
And I could be like up in the night on this, so correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't most of the power we're gen, that we're using here in Salt Lake generated very far away and like, where it's.
Not necessarily.
I'll just step in and it's a great conversation, um, yes, most of it is produced far away, but there are four power plants within our valley. And so by adding more renewables to the mix, it means that those local power plants also don't have to dispatch as much.
The other thing to consider, and I know that there are, are people that resist, are resistant to the idea that our climate is changing as a result of, uh, putting fossil fuel, uh, compounds into the atmosphere, but those of us who believe that that is a problem and/or believe that we don't want to take a chance on gambling, whether it's real or not. Reducing the amount of fossil fuels that are, that are, that are being burned to generate electricity has the prospect of, of stopping the temperatures rising, that the rising temperature creates more ozone in our atmosphere here in Salt Lake Valley. And also creates other problems with respect to water and all that, so there, one of the reasons that members of my community and, and my residents told me that, that want me want our city to participate in this, is they are concerned about climate change and they think that we should be doing something about it. And this is something that can be done about it.
And I've been to one of the power plants, my cousin owns a trucking company that goes in and out of there and I went with him and that whole area, the amount of pollution that goes into our air, it rattled me and I have pictures.
There's that one on North Temple and Tenth West, is that, is that a power plant? Yeah.
You may be referring to the Gadsby Power Plant, if I'm thinking of the right place.
Gas, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
What are the other three plants in the valley, Murray and?
Let's see, the West Valley Power Plant, um, then there's the Lakeside Power Plant in Utah County and there's one more in Utah County that I can't remember.
I can't, there, there's one, and I can't remember, it was fairly new to Utah, that was kind of out in the boonies. But the residual, what comes from the air that was on everything was, was wild.
Those power plants are natural gas.
Yes, that is correct, but they also do produce, uh, carbon pollution.
Oh, they do, but they are natural gas.
Yes.
It's, it's cleaner than coal, but it's still natural gas.
So I agree that we have a valley that has pollution and that's been the case since before the pioneers got here, if you burn too much in this valley, it's gonna be polluted. Pollution is a problem, we do have, um, other options. Which I think we're moving towards as a society, but I tend to agree with the mayor, I think it's better to let it naturally evolve. We already have an opportunity in our power bill to participate. If more people were participating, then they would be building power plants that were, were alternative energy efficient plants. But enough people don't participate on their own, which is why I'm guessing, which I shouldn't because that's the same as assuming, but um, why we're going with an opt-out instead of an opt-in. And that concerns me, I, if we really think this is a viable thing that people are going to support, then why isn't it an opt-in? And I think it might be because Rocky Mountain Power's opt-in hasn't worked as well as we would have hoped. I don't want, in the bell curve, to have this people responsible for something that I signed them up for and then they have to figure out how to sign out. And is that every year that they have to go on and get it or is it one time? Is it gonna be through Rocky Mountain Power or through another way, it's through Rocky Mountain Power? Okay, well, that's good. I wish that we, that, that those cities participating would have made it an opt-in as opposed to opt-out. Is there a reason why it's opt-out?
That we, we didn't make it that way, the, the state legislature made it that way.
And, and my, for my two cents, it's, it's because it doesn't work the other way, you just don't get the scale, right? It's not that the people who don't opt out would, would have opted in or would not have opted in because it's a good program or a bad program or whatever. It's just that the, the bulk of the people of four or five or six dollar a month change could be attributable to how hot it is, right? If, if it's a, this month, my electrical bill's gonna be about six or eight dollars higher than it would have been if it wasn't ninety-seven degrees outside today, right? It's one of those things, it's like the price of gas, it goes up, it goes down and things just happen. When the legislature adds a ten-cent gas tax, we all go, what the heck are you doing, we're gonna freak out, the price of gas is gonna be unaffordable. And it's like, are you kidding me, ten cents goes up and down all the time, based on whether there's a fire at a refinery in Idaho, you know, our price of gas goes up. So, things, things like that change all the time, this is for, for my two cents or five dollars, uh, per month. Thirty-eight thousand or whatever. For my opinion, it's, it has to be that way to opt in, but for me, this is, this is a, an inconsequential amount for most people. Just because it's, it's such a variable cost anyway. Adding a little bit into that variable cost just means your range went from here to here. You know, your, your, your September to your July range or, you know, January to July range went from, went from here to here. And you're still gonna spend most of the time in the same range, most of the time. The hottest months of the year, you'll be paying more than you thought you would, but you'll still be in that range. And, uh, and it's just like Pamela said, it's just the right thing to do. And Mayor Burton may be right, right? We may be, we may be getting there technology-wise and demand-wise and, you know, the, the.
Yeah, we may be, but that means we're just gonna be behind the curb when we could be at the forefront of making a difference sooner.
And, and for me, it's, and for me, again, it's that seat at the table, it's, we're the third largest city here, for me, it's setting an example, it's, it's saying this is a group that's going to make decisions based on power for the state of Utah. And who knows what sort of outsized impact it might have in the future? And we're saying no thanks, um, for, for seventy thousand dollars and we just paid that much and change for, almost that much for a liquor store lobbyist who can't even guarantee anything and then.
And alcohol's not healthy, this is healthy.
The, the problem is, is that if we vote and state to sustain this, the seven, if it's the higher end, for somebody like my house. It's amazing what, you're, amazing what your utility bill does when you don't have a hot tub. It's amazing, I, I will just tell you, it's amazing what.
Some of us wouldn't, would, would know that.
Uh, I learned the hard way. But given my current power bill, I would be voting for a twenty percent increase on most of my neighbors, because I get the little thing from the, from UP or from Rocky Mountain Power, here's where you at, I got a, I got a nice little smiley face.
That one that says you're a really bad, your neighbors aren't.
But it's so variable, like, I, I have an electric car now, fully electric car that we charge in our house every year. My electric bill is actually seven dollars cheaper this year than it was last year.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote to increase my neighbor's electric bill by fifteen or twenty percent, I'm just not. So that's where I'm at, so. I would suggest we're probably close to the end of the discussion, take a vote and see where we wanna go.
Go ahead, Chris, hit your button.
I just wanted to add that it would scale to how much energy you use, so that two-to-seven-dollar-per-month figure is based on the idea of a customer who's using seven hundred kilowatt-hours per month. So if you, if you use less than that, then you're gonna be at the lower.
Right, it's a per-kilowatt-hour thing, right?
It's a per-kilowatt-hour.
It's not a flat fee, go ahead Kent, sorry about that.
To your point, I see myself as one of those customers where I probably wouldn't sign up for it, but then if I was just automatically signed up for it, I probably wouldn't go to the trouble of signing out of it. I just, my, I guess, my problem is is, is, I feel like we're assuming, we're, we're taking, we're taking a little bit of power out of people's hands, not to use a pun there, sorry. We're taking a little bit of that freedom of choice away from people and I'm just not comfortable with that.
I, I approve your pun.
I would say take a vote. Chris, did you want to add anything else right there? Well, I'll tell you, just one second.
Well, the only thing I did want to add is that, yes, it, I think it changes the choice, uh, a little bit on that way. But it also increases choice in that it's gonna give all of these community members the opportunity to do something that many feel is really vitally important, you know, for the health of our communities.
To go along with the point, we didn't give them the choice to do it, we, we got them.
We gave them the choice not to do it.
We gave them the choice not to do it and that's, that's the hard part.
That is, that is a sticking point for a lot, but like I said, it has to be that way for it to work. It doesn't work if, if you leave it to those who are actively gonna opt in. That's why the Blue Sky Program, for example, hasn't had a more outsized effect, right? Anyway, um, what was the question I said I'd answer in just one second? No, you said.
What are we voting on?
Oh, what are we, what are we voting on, why do we have to do it? The board, the CREA board passed a resolution last Monday that gave us a deadline of July fifteenth to fill out the application and pay a hundred-dollar application to opt back in. So I don't know who fills that out, Mayor Burton, if we vote to do it, will you not do it? Because I don't know who fills that out, it's not a resolution that the council has to pass necessarily, it's just, somebody has to fill it out and I think you would have to have some sort of resolution that says we want to be there, don't you?
So, so the first step is, is paying a hundred hours to show you're kind of serious and to give you time to, to do other things that we have asked you to do. Eventually, your council's gonna have to approve the governance agreement, you're gonna need to have a vote on that as a council.
Right.
Um, and, and your form of government, I suppose the mayor could veto that and, and you could decide what to do with that, but, but, um, and I don't know in terms of. But, um, and I don't know in terms of sending the hundred hours, I, I mean, I frankly, you know, you should only do that if you think you're going to want to pursue it. But, um, but, uh, you ultimately will have to vote on, on, you know, joining the interloca, which is a resolution.
Right. So I guess what I'm going to ask for right now is just your overall sentiment on filling out the application and taking the next step. Now, that doesn't obligate us to the seventy-five thousand. It doesn't obligate us to future participation. It's just if we want to stay in. Or get back in, we need to apply to get back in by July fifteenth. Um, if you want to put it on a resolution, we can do that and have it on the first meeting in July. It'll, it won't be exactly according to our scheduling rules, but we can skip that and put it on a resolution if you want to. I'm okay with just doing a straw poll and letting staff fill out the application and. And doing, you know, doing the things that we need to until we get to the point where we need to pass, uh, you know, a, a resolution or an ordinance. For the governance agreement and all that kind of stuff. And obviously budget discussion will come into that as well. Um, but in order to take any further steps, we need to take one step, which is costs us a hundred dollars in the application. Um, if you're okay with doing that, can I get a thumbs up? Okay, I've got four. I've got four. So, uh, Mayor or Corbin, um, thoughts on that? Any objections or concerns?
My, my thoughts, I don't have a desire to sign that because I, I think it's unnecessary. I think we're moving that way.
Okay, where does that leave us? Because Corbin.
That means for that to happen now, you'd have to take it to the council. They'd have to have a vote. That would, uh, be unveto proof that I had signed it.
What do you think, Corbin? Josh, any thoughts?
Sorry, I was just gonna ask the mayor if he was, if he was willing to exercise his veto authority on it, but he just answered that question.
Yeah. Yeah, um, as far as applying and filling it out, could we have council staff apply and fill it out and spend the hundred dollars?
I don't think that's in their lane.
Could I fill it out and sign it? Authorize the hundred dollars out of council budget?
I don't think that's our lane.
So did we just have an hour discussion and we can only do what the mayor wants to do? Is that what I'm hearing?
Unless we had five votes.
It's our form of government.
It's frustrating to me. Um. Josh, go ahead.
Yeah, for, for what it's worth, I agree with that assessment of the, the next steps on this. If the council wanted to vote in a following meeting. Uh, with that veto proof majority that we. I made reference to, then they'd be able to do that. But absent that, I don't think there's anybody else in the city that would have the opera, or the authority to sign on behalf of the city.
Okay, um, with that said. If the council put it on as a resolution. Those aren't vetoable, but then again, they also don't obligate the mayor to do anything. Right? If we put it in as an ordinance, that's different, right? Then that can be vetoed and that can, can force the action. What do you think? Alan, go ahead.
Uh, my understanding is resolutions do not go to the mayor for veto. It's a, the, a resolution of the city council.
Right.
Um, but an ordinance is vetoable by the mayor and overridden by the council by.
Two thirds.
Two thirds, five votes.
Five. And that's two thirds of the body, not two thirds of those present, right? Okay. All right. Well, with that said, I guess we're not in unless we can get one more vote. Um, I'm going to go ahead and plan to put it on the agenda. For the first meeting in July. Without objection. Um. And we'll, we'll bring it up to a vote.
What we should do on that and is formally waive the rules to allow that to occur. And. I'll, I'll support a waiver of the rules to put it on the agenda. So, but we should really waive the rules to put. If we're going to do something outside the council rules to put it on the first meeting, I don't think we're quite, are we outside the two weeks or are we okay?
I think we're actually okay.
You're actually four weeks from the first meeting in July.
No, because he still works.
You're right. You're right. I thought we'd be pushing the schedule, but you're right. I think we, I think we can do it within the rules.
Yeah, the, the twenty-sixth of June would be, you'd need something else because.
Right.
But, but the first meeting in July, council rules supports whatever you decide without anything with the rule.
That's the eleventh.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we'll plan on that. So, uh. We'll, we'll put this on for a formal vote on the eleventh and see where we are.
It's the tenth.
Yeah, let me just say, um, if any of you have any additional questions, we didn't do our presentation and that probably isn't that important. But if you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out to either me or Christopher. If I, if I don't know the answer, I'll get it from him.
For, for transparency purposes. I would suggest that, uh, you do that as a public hearing and that we announce the public hearing and if the public show up. There may be a couple of people that could be swayed if, uh. Based on public hearing. So I would suggest we do that as a public. We, we do that as a public hearing and generate a public hearing off of that.
Okay.
Or, or a public, or at least a specific public comment period.
Yeah.
On that specific.
Do it as a public hearing on an ordinance.
I would agree. My, my reason for the thumbs up on that was to give us time so that I could talk to people more. Um, and that's all I was doing with my vote. I'm, I still don't know if I'm for or against, but. I didn't mind paying a hundred dollars to give me time to fight, to figure out, since there's a good chance. Listening to this, I might be a swing vote. I'm someone who's going to have to pay attention. So that's all I was. I was saying, okay, because I wanted more time. And if we can have public come to this. And make it something we can really hear from them and see what people are wanting, then I'm all for that. Uh, and that, like I said, that's all I was voting with my vote was to try to give us a little more time.
Okay. Alan and Cindy, I imagine you guys got that for July tenth. We'll talk about it in the morning on, at, at agenda planning, but. We'll get that going. Okay. Thank you for being here, gentlemen. I appreciate your, uh.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate.
It's nice to see other councils working.
We need a motion for a five minute break. Can we do the whole, can we just say it?
I'll, I'll just say it. Okay, we're going to take, uh. Five-ish minute recess because some of us have had some caffeine and need to go to the bathroom. Without objection.
All right, guys. All right, guys, thank you for being patient. This is the moment you've all been waiting for.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, this is the moment you've all been waiting for. This is the final tentative budget discussion. Because we have to adopt it next week, or sorry, next meeting in two weeks. So this is the final tentative budget discussion. So we got to hammer this out and come to agree upon tentative budget. You guys, for those that aren't aware, maybe new council members and anybody online, the tentative budget gives an operating budget for the city to use while we debate truth and taxation that goes into August. If we debate truth and taxation and we don't change anything, the tentative budget becomes the budget, just so you know. So if there's not appetite to continue working on things and voting again in August when we have the public hearing on the truth and taxation, we will be stuck with what we've got. So there you go. Am I right, wrong? You guys? Okay. All right, so where are we? Who's leading the discussion back here?
Yeah, I am here. Denise is coming back from a conference, and so she asked me to be here and kind of walk through some of this information with you.
She's on a jet plane.
Either on or deplaning. I'm not exactly sure of her timing. But I'm sure she would have loved to have been here to tell you guys that we have received the information from the county on the certified tax rate. So I just wanted to cover a little bit of the information on the tax rate and the property tax revenues that are certified by the county. So you can see here that the last five years, we have the tax year on the left, so it gets a little fun when we talk about fiscal year versus tax year, but 2024 would be what residents would pay this fall, which is our fiscal year 25. Certified rate would be the 001331, and then that bottom line underneath it would be the plus three and a half percent property tax increase if that is what is determined through this budget and the truth and taxation.
So the tax year is a year minus the budget year?
Yes.
Right? So that's, so the 2024 line is the line where we've been given by the county.
That's correct.
That if we don't change the rate, that's what we get.
Right, and so let me move forward, and you can see the actual dollars associated with that. That bottom black line, the 2024, we would get the 19.28 million dollars. Plus the separate rate that is charged for our GL bond, and that is set by our debt service schedule. We don't have control over that. The new growth that came in from the assessor's office was the $817,000, which is almost double of what Denise had planned and built into the estimates of the mayor's budget. So that column that says increase, if there is no property tax increase, our total revenue from property tax would be the 20.855 million. If the three and a half percent addition to property tax revenue, that would be that bottom blue line. Does that make sense? So the increase of our three and a half percent is equivalent to 703,000.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
I forgot to bring my tax, my tax property value with me, but but I've got it on my phone because my wife was nice to send to me, so thank you, Virginia. So the 2024 plus 3.5%, my eyes are bad. Is that point 001378?
Yep.
All right, so the total rate would be point 00.1428. So let me kind of give you an idea here. So last year with the point 001499, my West Jordan taxes were 404. If it would have stayed at 00.1430, it would have been 385, which is a difference of 15, 20 bucks.
Down.
So down. So if we do this one, plus the 3.5% at 00.1428, I and my household will save $20 even with the tax increase, according to the taxes.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that the 3.5% goes back to our inflationary discussions in the past, that even at point 00.1428, people will be paying less than they paid this year.
This is why I hate that they call it a tax increase when it's not really a tax increase. Half the people will pay less because some taxes will go up, because normally, normally the distribution is about half go up and about half go down.
It does depend on where your particular property falls in terms of the
It does, but I would say my property is not the highest and not the lowest, so I'm the median.
You're average.
I'm average.
Yeah, and the, and the commercial property piece of it factors into that too, whether their valuations have gone up or down in comparison with residential.
The new commercial growth helps keep that lower. That's what raises it, makes it go down. So new growth is very helpful at that.
Very true, and whether it's from residential or commercial, it's going to help. I do have, if I can advance just a couple, this is what it would look like in terms of the last few years on our revenue. That light blue chunk would be the three and a half percent. But we do have the numbers for the average home in West Jordan. Like you were saying, this is what it would look like for an average home value. It's 528,000 dollars. And so property taxes is assessed at a 55% of that value. So it's the taxable value. You don't pay tax on the full value that the home is assessed, but 55% of that. And so that column that says tax at the top, that's what that average home would pay. Last year, in the fall of 2023, where it says prior year, it would have been 406. That average home for 2024 would go down to 401. And then with a three and a half percent increase, it would go up to 414. So that's kind of in line with what you're saying.
Okay, so where the rubber meets the road, I'm going to ask this question. If we have $800,000 in new growth and we're proposing $700,000 in property tax, that increases our budget by 1.5 million dollars. Is that correct? We had $800,000 in new growth that we're spending, and we have another $700,000 in new taxes. That means that we've, we've expanded the city government by 1.5 million dollars. No?
Let me, let me
I just don't like, I just don't like characterizing it that way. It's not that we've expanded the city government, it's that the price of things have gone up. The city government, how do you, how do you count the city? If you count it by dollars, if that's the size of the city government, then yeah. But if the size of the city government is the number of employees, or number of employees per resident, or number of, you know, taxable burden per resident or something like that, then not necessarily. Right? I mean, it just kind of depends on
Do we consider
how you measure what is the size of government. If the size of government is
Do we, do we consider a COLA, growing government?
The COLA is not growing government. COLA could be covered by new growth. Right, but you included new growth in your, we expanded government by 1.5 million dollars. What we did was we, we, we went beyond, we're going $700,000 beyond the new growth. And when you look at the, the ongoing, and yes, we have ongoing, we, we're hiring three officers. That ongoing expand, I, I can buy that some of that is new growth. I can buy some, but when we look at, when we look at the, the growth, last year we expanded by 10 positions. This year we're expanding by 10 positions. So that's 20 positions. At what point in time are we going to stop hiring employee, more employees that are going above and beyond our new growth? That's my question.
And I would argue that over the past 10 years, we've been underemployed. Like, we need more people in every area.
And if we have the adequate amount of employees, we're saving money by less burnout and less turnover.
And less overtime.
And that.
It's overtime costs.
I will say, I would, I would cut out the code enforcement officer and save 105,000, but that's Councilmember Lamb. And the reason I say that is because in the last meeting, and Corbin, I'll put that on you. You, you said that at this time, you're not ready to hire one, a code enforcement officer, that if we did that money, it might not necessarily bring in a new code enforcement officer. So unless I saw that we were actually bringing a new one in, I would say, let's hold off on that 100,000 and do that later.
Agree.
So something, well
Go ahead, Corbin.
I won't quote Corbin, he's right here.
If you, if you fund that FTE for a code enforcement officer, I take that as a signal you want us to hire one. We would, we would hire it. What I
But I think you said that
What I would like to do is treat it differently than our traditional code enforcement officer. We talked about the pendulum of code enforcement. I would, I would suggest we operate that code officer a little different than our three current code officers. But if you gave us that FTE, we would
Yeah.
We'd feel that because I take that as a signal that that's a priority. That's a big enough priority to the council that you're willing to put resources behind it.
And I guess maybe I'm saying that's where I'd want to have more information about how you would spend that money rather than, and this is no dig into your or the staff, it's just, well, unless we know what that's going to, and that's where I'd like you guys to come back next and say, hey, we can add this, and this is what we would do, but right now I feel like we don't know what we're going to do with that 105,000.
Corbin, when I asked the mayor if he was willing to support a new code enforcement officer, he said he didn't know. And so there was some thought as, maybe some creative thoughts of, okay, if this did get funded and the mayor doesn't want to hire that new code enforcement officer, you spoke to some ideas that sounded really attractive to me. I, I enjoyed the thoughts of that because it points to a lot of pain that my constituents right around me are feeling. And it, and it addresses some of those things. I wonder if you could take a moment and readdress that.
Yeah, I'll try to explain what I was trying to explain last week. The council and the mayor have a big priority for community aesthetics. One of the challenges we have with community aesthetics, no matter how many resources you put it, put towards it, is a lot of the aesthetic issues in West Jordan look like they are in the public realm. We think they are the city's issue, but they're technically on private property. That can be things like, you may remember a resident coming in and complaining about the entries to their subdivision, the lights being out, the landscaping not looking good, back-facing walls or side walls that don't look good or look beat up. All kinds of things like that, that are very difficult to deal with because they're not, they're not the city's responsibility directly, and the homeowners who own the property don't feel the pain of the aesthetics because it's not on their front yard. It's on a backyard or a side yard, or it looks like it's a public realm. It doesn't look like it's private property. Among other things, if, if you funded a code enforcement officer, I would like to consider using that code enforcement officer in a different way than traditional code enforcement. I would propose using that code enforcement officer position to deal with community aesthetic issues across the city in a proactive manner and being creative about addressing those aesthetic issues, particularly ones that look like they're in the public realm but are really on private property. And that might include small incentives to get private property owners to deal with those aesthetic issues rather than the enforcement of citations. It would include proactive efforts to try to just ask for greater compliance on issues like tree height canopies without the stick of a citation if you don't deal with the tree height canopy. So those kinds of, those kinds of approaches, right? A carrot approach to code enforcement and code compliance and aesthetic issues to go along with the stick component of code enforcement that we have currently with our three officers.
I have, just to speak to that, I have a neighbor lives at the top of Door Lee Drive, whose, whose cinder block wall was destroyed by a crazy driver. And it's been in disrepair now for, I don't know, a year and a half, two years. And the general consensus in my neighborhood is that wall is owned by the city of West Jordan. And Mr. Shelton, Councilmember Shelton, why don't you fix that damn wall? Sorry.
Did they use that word?
We were, no, they didn't. That's what I felt when they were speaking to me. So
What they say and what you hear may not
Yeah, yeah. So everyone in my neighborhood knows that our city is dragging its feet and taking care of that wall because it's our wall. And just that's to your point. We know that that, that wall belongs to that, to that man in his, in his, it's on his property. It is his wall, but nobody else knows that.
Well. And we have those all over the place, right? Like, especially the neighborhood signage. Here's the problem that I have with that approach. If I do it for one person, then do I have, my house doesn't face a public, my, my house faces the public street. If I let my lawn go bad, if I let my part, I'm going to, I'll be very specific. I let my park strip go bad, that's public property. Is the city going to come maintain my park strip for me? Because that's an aesthetic issue that faces the public right away. And
You don't want to go down that rabbit hole, is what you're saying.
I, I, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole where
I can respect that, for sure.
Where, where we're saying, hey, we want to support, we're going to, we're going to pay for something that faces a public right of way, which is a back fence. But my house faces a public right of way, and the park strip, I don't have to maintain it because the city will come do it too.
It's a really good point, right? Any program like this, and this is why we haven't proposed it yet. The mayor and I have been batting around ideas like this for a while, but it would take some work to think about how can we structure a program and some corral around this kind of issue that we are doing these kinds of things in a sustainable, moderate way that's defensible, definable, and could be, could be done citywide.
So that's why I'm willing to wait till next year. Let's get a structure and then come back and I think it'd be easier to fund this than, I don't know if I have five people that would say to cut this or not, but I'm one of seven that would cut the 105,000.
See, and, and for me, I think code enforcement is a, is something that has been brought up to me as much as anything else, as far as, you know, being a, a, a listening ear for the city, to the community for the last eight years. This is probably, code enforcement is probably one of the biggest issues that people bring up to me.
And I think no matter what, that's always going to be a thing, whether we hire somebody or not, whether we have enough people or not.
Well, right, and for me, it's not the specific way that Corbin's proposing using this specific person. That's up to the staff, right? For me, I think code enforcement is shorthanded. Whether, whether the additional person does something different or does exactly the same that the other three are doing right now. For me, code enforcement is short-staffed. That's, that's just, as far as, as far as what people say to me of what is wrong with the city, I, I can boil it down to not all of it, obviously, but one of the things that gets brought up as much as anything else, if not more, is, is code enforcement issues. So for me, I'm, I'm in favor of hiring a code enforcement issue, and you figure out how best to use him, you figure out how, you know, what to tell him to do or not do. That's not on us. For me, code enforcement needs another body.
Well, and I can say before I, I ran, I would, people would complain about a lot of things, and they would just say the city's not doing things. And I, so I would talk to some members of the city, and these are in different departments, and it was always, we're doing the best we can. We're understaffed. And it's that hard thing that anyone who complains thinks we're not doing anything, but the minute you say we're going to increase budget so that we can have more people, then people start complaining about the taxes, government's too big, government, you know, and all of this. My answer, Councilmember Green, I think is, when do we stop doing it? When we're fully staffed. And I don't think we are in different departments. So, so that's, that's my point. You know, we bring up that we're increasing, but man, our city is increasing, and we're going to keep increasing. And so I would rather see us be more proactive and start having people ahead of that rather than go, now we got to catch up because we're, we're never going to catch up that way. So that's just my thought on that. I understand exactly what you're saying on things, but my answer from, from that is you stop when you're, it's like you eat, you, you stop eating when you're full. And we're not, we're not full right now.
Yeah, and for my two cents, there should always be a healthy tension between what staff wants, what staff needs, and what the taxpayer is willing to pay for, and what we should fund. There should always be a healthy tension there, but for me, on this issue and code enforcement, it's grabbed, it's grabbed past that healthy tension and it's tense, and it has been for several years, and I'm glad somebody proposed this this year. Because for, for me, this is one of those issues that adding a person restores the healthy tension. Adding two people might get closer to being full at the dinner table. But adding one at least gives me an appetizer, right? I mean, it gives me, it gets it started to, toward, back to a, a healthy balance. So there's, there's always got to be a balance. You're always going to have, the, the city will always be able to do more than what the taxpayers are able to fund, right? If, if we had unlimited budget, the city would have a lot more events. We'd have a lot of things. We'd be able to make it look this way and that way, and our roads would be paved with gold and whatever. We provide the money, the city will find ways to spend it. It's just government does that all, all the time. But for me, there's got to be that healthy tension, but here, here we've just gone past that. We've gone past the healthy tension, so that's just
As, as a follow-up to what Councilmember Shelton said, that I wasn't sure that I wanted that for code enforcement. The reason I'm hesitating, I'm trying to decide if that's our greatest need is in code enforcement, or is it someone in sidewalks to help catch up on the sidewalk problems we have in the city? So that, that's what it is. I'm not opposed to another person in code enforcement. I'm just trying to weigh the option of where the most important location would be. So I would accept it for code enforcement or another place, whatever you choose.
And that's where I come back saying, the mayor and Corbin didn't ask for this position. We're kind of throwing at them, but I'm still not getting a, yeah, we want it, let's do it. So that's why I'm not for funding it this year.
Yeah, and I, I can appreciate that, but I'll say, just to the mayor's point, that this to me is, I don't know if it's the biggest priority, but it's up there. I don't hear people coming to me and complaining about sidewalks. I mean, maybe, maybe they complain
Where do you live?
Except for, except for a certain somebody's sister, but
To my whole area. To my whole area.
But I, and I know different places in the city are going to be different, right? But for, for my. Constituents or the ones that at least reach out to me or the ones that I see complaining online and, and that kind of thing. This is, this is up there priority wise. This is important.
I'll, I'll agree with that. I feel like as I've listened to my constituents. It seems, and this is again from my limited perspective. That code enforcement is a top priority in the city that hasn't been addressed. Um, but, but it, it takes four, right? So all I respect, whatever the body decides.
But politics is a lot of optics. And we have to unfortunately play into these optics. And I'm not saying code enforcement isn't as a priority or as something else like fixing sidewalks. But if our city feels and sees that we're listening to them, such as adding a code enforcement, I can go either way. I can say, yeah, we can hold off for another year or we can go this year. But to me. I think it's important that we're, because I get them too. Our neighborhood's got sidewalk issues because of the sinking in the trees. But at the same time, I've had more people approach me about code enforcement than any other thing in this city. And that is valuable. And if we can help our residents show, hey, we're helping code enforcement, I think that goes a long way. And getting the support for the other things that we want to fund in the city.
By the way, not to belabor this point because this isn't really what the slide's about, but. Code enforcement, by the way, is one of those things that pays off in the long term. The better you can make your city look, the more investment you're going to get in it, the more growth you're going to have. That kind of thing. So as these things can get cleaned up, property values go up. And when property values go up, by the way, tax rates go down. I don't know if anybody.
Look at last week, our biggest broken window was fixed with H Mart.
Yeah, I don't know if it's the biggest, but it was a big one.
Well, it did too, yeah, a huge one. It's a, it's a big one and just the feeling of the city of, you know, having that, anything we can do to. To fix more windows, you know, bigger or not, I'm, I'm all for.
Good point. All right, let's go back to the, what, what you wanted to say.
No, you're fine. It is your meeting, so discuss as you wish, but just wanted to kind of highlight that, that. The rose on top is the revenue. So new revenue, new ongoing revenue would be that contract from the charter school. Um, and then an estimate in it, event fees and passport fees that would come in. Um, then that new property tax growth number. Um, and so those amounts, those revenues. Do indeed exceed on the revenue side, the expenses of these things that are being added or. Uh, included in this proposed budget, those three police officers, the events assistant, the accountant, the communication specialist and. Um, those other positions.
So, th- those are just new headcount. Not, not necessarily expenses overall in the city. That's just headcount matching up with.
Those, those positions. Yeah. And then the one time would be things like the, the vehicles or the equipment or those one time purchases.
Right. But for example, the cola that was mentioned is not included because that's for everybody, right?
Correct.
Not included in that.
I don't know if that helps answer your question, Councilmember Green, but you can look that over and be happy to answer more questions later if you want. We did want to kind of review the changes, so we've handed out this, um, hard copy, but this. The slide summarizes those, but the details for the numbers and things like that are in your, in your hard copy there. Um, I did. Uh, so you can see it's broken out by fund, so the general fund there will be on the first page. Um, and it shows the things that either, uh, the department has added in terms of. You know, the, the vehicle leases that we'd found, um, that needed to be included. Um, those sorts of things that, that line seventeen where it says transfer to CIP fund, that's the. Additional from the new property tax growth, um, that we would transfer to the CIP fund. So the balance for the CIP fund transfer would increase by two hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. And then as you move to the column where it shows the council requests, so that would be the prime gov software for the council office. Um, the turnouts, uh, the. Uh, turnover for the turnouts, the second turnout, so new hires, things like that would be an ongoing twenty thousand dollars here. And then your code enforcement officer, which those things would then reduce that transfer to the CIP fund by the one hundred and ninety two. So overall, the, the transfer to the CIP fund still is increasing by a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. Um, we don't show that total on here, but when you add those together, that's, um, what would be increased to the transfer to the CIP fund. Does that make sense? Also included, you can, you can scroll through those pages, but it would have, um, the twenty five thousand dollars for city works. Through our development services fund. Uh, the capital projects fund would show, um, that increase from the. The grant, the state outdoor recreation grant for Sycamore's Park. Those other two road projects, widening seventy eighth south and the pedestrian bridge project. And then that's where we would fund the second set of turnouts for the fire department as that one time expense was through that CIP fund. And then the permanent entertainment stage, um, at the Veterans Park. The, um, the capital leases you'll see show up in the sewer fund as well as the, the general fund. Uh, we had a solid waste, a change to the solid waste fund, um, given that the landfill costs are higher than we expected due to the change in the green waste program. And then the streetlight fund is also had a grant that it would receive from the federal. Federal government and then that would be put towards rodeo ground lighting. And then the corresponding, um, charges in the fleet management fund and the IT fund based on those, um, new positions. Or the software for the council office. And I think that encapsulates everything that, uh, was discussed in the previous meetings, but if there's something that, um. We wanted to discuss further or that we needed to make sure we include that isn't on this list, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. I think we, I think everything that we've talked about here, general fund wise. Is we've kind of talked about and voted on and hammered out. Um, I know we wanted to talk about the fee schedule and. I think that was, oh, right, go ahead.
Just refresh my memory on the turnout gear for the firefighters. We decided to. Take that all on all at once versus over a period of three years.
I don't remember.
Yeah, the council said three hundred thousand dollar one time out of CIP.
That's what the council decided, okay.
Man, a can of soda does not last very.
I appreciate how this is laid out. It makes, it's very easy to read and understand. So I appreciate the hard work on that. Yeah, thank you. But again, if there are other questions that come up, Denise will be back tomorrow and I'm available as well. The next, the next section that I had on here was some discussion about the dumpster program in answer to some of the questions that Denise had received. From the council members, um, and Brian. I think he's still here too, if, uh, he needed to ask further questions, but we wanted to kind of highlight the, the information from the dumpster days event. Um, so looking at it on the left-hand side there annually, it costs about four hun- forty thousand dollars for the city. Um, and they, they said that there was a, a vehicle count. They, um, counted how many cars had come through on the last two events and so averaging that out, it's about. Thirty-three to thirty-four hundred. Residents or families or however you want to count a vehicle. Um, they collected a hundred and four dumpsters worth of trash and things that were hauled to the, to the landfill. Um, including fifteen dumpsters of green waste that would have gone to the landfill, but were instead taken to Diamond Tree and. Um, accepted at no cost to the city other than the transport there. They were also able to pull out the e-waste and household, household hazardous waste and other things that are not legally allowed to be put into landfill. And so the city staff were able to inform and educate the, the residents about how to handle those, those substances. And so in comparison with our, our dumpster rental information, if a resident wants to reserve and rent a dumpster. The delivery and hauling fees are a hundred and forty-two dollars. And then we'd add on the, the tonnage cost, which they average over, over the time has been about two point five two tons per. Dumpster. So that, what we're currently paying is twenty-four dollars per ton, which will increase by two dollars starting in July. But that sixty dollars is the, the current twenty-four dollars per ton. And then it's typically about an overhead cost of twenty percent. So. Two hundred and forty-three dollars is what it's costing in fiscal year twenty-four. To, um, have a resident take a, a rental of a dumpster. Um, so before the, this, the fee started getting charged when the Trump dumpsters were truly given away free, they had a four thousand two hundred and sixty-one dumpsters. In twenty twenty that residents utilized, which would in today's cost, based on, you know, if we had that many getting used this year, it would be over a million dollars.
So the forty thousand dollars covers all four events?
All three events.
There's three events, okay. I saw there's another one come up in, on the twenty-ninth.
Yep, correct.
And is that forty thousand, does that include employees?
Yes, that is staff, time and everything.
Thank you.
I think it's safe to assume that many of those people that come to the dumpster days probably would not pay to. Reserve a dumpster and have it on their home. They take advantage of it because it is a, a program and it's a, a day that they can plan on and.
That's true. We have several cars that come back. A few times too. So it's, it grows every event. It seems like we get more and more participation, so. Does the mayor ever get tired standing on a Segway out there directing traffic? I'd never asked him that, mayor. I'm just kidding.
Get tired. I get more energy the more people that come.
But does the Segway?
The Segway brings me up to the level of the pickups.
Segway's overpowered, so we're okay. The Segway's just always four inches taller. Come on. It's called a spade, spade. Just kidding.
That list of information at the bottom there just shows what the, our line item for a city dumpster, so what the city pays to, um. When someone rents a dumpster and what it, obviously there's a charge of the seventy-five dollar for the first one or two hundred and fifty for additional ones. That would offset that, but that is the cost for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and year to date so far. So you can see that's kind of gone down too. And I don't know how much of that is a direct correlation to the dumpster days, but it's probably safe to assume that that's part of it. So I hope that answers the questions that there were about the dumpster program. Um. There were some, a couple of other fees that you guys wanted to discuss. We're happy to, um, answer questions or provide information. You have specific ones right now.
Councilmember White Light, did you want to go ahead with what you were talking about?
Sure. Well, this, this really isn't for Becky. This is for the rest of you. Um, I just have concerns about. People not being able to afford homes. And one of the ways they're not going to be able to afford homes in the future is if too many homes are bought up by companies because. When, when an individual owns a home, that home. Passes over eventually. They're, you know, they either move or they die. One way or another, they leave that home and the home gets bought by from someone else. But when a corporation owns a home. It doesn't because corporations don't die. And they have boards and they move on and those homes will not make it back into the pool of available homes. So I just sent out my proposal, which now went away. There it is. Um, that maybe, and I met with. I don't know their last names, Patrick and Duncan. And what they said is what if, because I said, can you guys think of a way that we can work on this so that West Jordan doesn't become. All rental homes? Because what we know from what we're told from the police and, and from data is that. Oftentimes rentals are. Not, they cost us more in the city. They cost more services in the city. And so that's another concern. So. Um, if you saw my proposal, my proposal is just looking at. Our business license fee for rental homes and that we maybe look at charging a little more. And that we do it on a tiered basis, just as we tier it for our water, that we do it to discourage. Any one entity from coming into our city and buying up a lot of homes. I think our city has a lot of areas that are very attractive to those companies. Just because of the type of housing stock we have. So.
I think you have a point because in St. George, they have the issue with all the VRBOs and all that stuff and I think there's additional charges. For people that own second, third homes and stuff down there that I don't think we do here in, in West Jordan.
Yeah. Yeah. They, and there are many cities looking at things like that. So. My tiers that I proposed was our current one for, um, rental homes is a hundred and sixty-eight and. I think maybe even that could be slightly higher for one to two, then three to five go up. Two hundred-ish or something per unit, six to seven, four hundred. And if you've got, um, eight plus rentals in our city, that it'd be a thousand dollars a unit. Doesn't mean they can't do it, but we, we kind of did the same kind of a thing, structuring our fee to attract, um, and. And be able to keep a. Kind of an amusement facility. And so that, that's what I'm just bringing to the council is maybe a way that we can, um. Discourage large amounts of our properties being bought up by corporations.
So this is solely homes, not units in an apartment complex?
Yes, that's what I'm proposing.
Specific to single family or would townhomes qualify?
You'd have to do townhomes.
I think townhomes as well.
I'd speak to this. I, I think it's a great idea. I'm, I'm concerned about workarounds that corporations always seem to be able to find, like. Creating a new.
Companies.
Property that they purchase.
LLC.
And then, and LLC is if, uh, they, they'll actually make a new LLC for each property and then that LLC is. Then owned by the parent company and they can figure out ways around it. But I love what you're trying to accomplish with this.
I, I like the conversation start. We need to do this. We're behind, you know, all of us, every city and municipality is behind. On the issues, but we should also look at, if possible, if it's in our realm, adjusting zoning regulations for owner occupancy. Issue, you know, there's something besides that because my worry is passing, the, the corporation's passing on that fee to the renter. That's obviously a major concern and that's something they would not even bat an eye to do. So even if it's something that requires a certain percentage, they only, they can't, they can cap out at a certain percentage within an area of how many homes they own. Is, is potentially an option. But I really, really like starting the conversation with that possible business license aspect because it's a, it's a serious concern. And we're not thankfully having issues such as Park City or, or, you know, St. George or something, but it's.
Or like where Provo has all those homes that were rentals for students.
Yeah.
It was out of control.
The, the, the difficulty, I mean, I don't disagree with the direction that you want to go. I just think that the corporation's just going to pass it on.
Yeah.
It's a cost of doing business and whatever we raise, the corporation's going to pass on to the renter. Because they got to cover the cost. So if we charge a thousand dollars a year, we just raised the individuals' rent a hundred.
But they also have to compete with the general market.
And, and, and I wish there was more things we can do like a vacancy tax or a tax. A tax based on single occupancy versus only multiple homes. And unfortunately, that's out of our realm.
The trouble, the only trouble I see with it is you're, you're reducing the rental supply. If this goes into effect, so if. If, if a company doesn't form multiple corporations and, and get around it that way. What you're doing is you're, you're reducing how many rental units will be available and when you reduce supply, price goes up. The demand's not going to change. The demand, this is, I, I have thought a lot, especially like, as I've taken now a year and a half of. Of economics classes and, and legal classes and I've, and sit in these meetings a few times a month. And talk to developers a few times a month aft- outside of these meetings and all the, all the conversations and the news stories and things about housing. I really, really wrestled with this issue and how much a city can actually do, especially with the conversations that are happening at the state level. Saying the cities need to X, Y, and Z. And I'm sitting here thinking, the cities can X, Y, and Z all day long. It's not going to change anything. It's, it's a much bigger macroeconomic issue, I mean, the thing that Steve Waldrop keeps mentioning, uh, the housings are for the state. Is that we're now, median house prices are now six point something times the median income. And there's a, I mean, the historical average has been three, and so we're two and a half times less affordable than we've ever been, ever. So things that are having, and things that will change that are, are not going to be. I mean, I, I would love to think that a city could change that in our city. But I think what, what you would do is you would, you would just reduce supply. Um, I, you know, things are, things are going to have to change systematically, our mortgage system. That's in, in this country is based on that three times ratio. Mortgage, the, the thirty-year fixed mortgage is not going to be able, it's not sustainable anymore, the banks are going to have to come up with new lending vehicles and new. The whole paradigm has to shift to accept this reality. So us putting in a business license tax or business license fee on. How many houses you own, yeah, it's going to stop. Whatever that company was that bought up Wobbe West, right, and turn them, turn it into a hundred, or not a hundred. Because it wasn't a hundred, sixty-three rental homes. It's going to be a hundred, but it's not. It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna make them split up into three different LLCs or three different DBAs or, or whatever it's going to be, right?
Oh, they would just create, yeah.
Yeah, they're just going to have to create new LLCs, if you look at the city infomap. And you click on all the properties that like Peterson, who was just here, is trying to develop, they all have a different owner name. So I, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the thought.
Straining, because we want to make a difference and yet we feel like our hands are tied.
And I just don't know how legal it is too, I just would question, make sure that that would be.
Again, I met with the attorneys.
Okay. I just wonder what the challenge.
There's no doubt it's. Legal to, we, we can tier stuff, I, I'm just.
Could I ask Mr. Chandler a question?
For sure.
Is there a way for the city to dig into the ownership a little bit? I mean, we, we know that these companies are, are buying properties with individual LLCs. Can we dig into the ownership of the LLC to, to find?
Some of them are so layered.
Yeah, I don't know that we would be able to do that with a real high um, level of confidence. You know, we'd be subject to the public records that, that are out there. You know, we can check, and there are public records and so we can look. But if they are creating new LLCs, different names. You know, that there are games that can be played that might prevent us from having one hundred percent success rate on verifying something like this.
On what we're doing for employees with the, the down payment assistant, what if. We start partnering with some of the financial institutions in West Jordan and start doing workshops, start. Educate, do, starting a whole education series with our residents to start the process of understanding. How to buy their home, work with uh nonprofits like NACA who, who, whose sole purpose. In the United States is to get homeowners their first home. We, we can expand on, we, we may not be able to like stop corporations per se, but instead turn it around. And educate our residents on path to homeownership, that might be a better avenue. That would yield even faster results, I think, of getting people into homes.
But once the housing stock is bought up by corporations, they're not available for people to buy, and that's my concern.
That's absolutely.
So.
And then, then part of that education program could be to homeowners on selling their home. Potentially, I don't know, like just avoid the cash overs or something, I don't know, I'm just spitballing right now.
I see a, I see a real issue in our city and I think we should do something, but that's just me. Um, do you want me to finish my items or what do you want to do, Chair?
Sure, do you guys, do you want to get a feeling of the council on whether we want to do that on this fee schedule or not?
That would be great.
I'd like to do a study to see what we can do. I don't think we need to make the decision tonight, but I agree with you, we need to do something.
We need to do something and I would like to study it further.
Let's, I, I would study it.
So what does us studying it look like, what does that mean?
Well, it means we need information about what we can do, what we can't do, what the costs are, I mean, what you've proposed. Are fine numbers, but it's just like any other fee schedule. I don't know where those numbers come from and I, I, I want to see where they come from, why they come from and how that makes sense. So I don't know who does that, is that Warren, is that Alan, is that city staff? Um, but it's something we're going to bring back. And obviously tonight's talking about.
I, I feel like those numbers are awesome, I just feel like they lack teeth.
I. I'm, I'm willing to look at it more, but if we have to say yes or no tonight, I'd say no because. I don't want to impose something that. A development company is going to turn around and go to our people in the Utah Legislature and say. See, West Jordan City Council just made housing less affordable in West Jordan because they raised the. The rent on these homes in this neighborhood by a hundred dollars.
Or we could say that we're doing exactly what the governor would like us to do is to help with affordable housing for people to buy homes.
Then we need to, we need to find a way to do that because right now, I, I think, I think what you're proposing is great, but. Within minutes, all of us came up with ways that corporations could get around it, and if we could do that in minutes. People who do that for a living could do it much better and stronger, so that's what we need, what we need to do is. When you say us figure it out, it's not us, we need someone who is as skilled as those companies are. And say, how do we stop this? And it's not going to come from any of us because that's not what we do, I mean, again, your, your idea was, was very well. Uh, well-founded and, and the idea of the proposal of this is, is even better than that, but. Like I said, it kind of got slightly debunked fairly quickly. In terms of how they could get around it, so if we can find someone who can help us with that, I'm all for making that happen because. What you're afraid of is exactly what I'm afraid of as well, but what I don't want to do is do this. And then instantly those people have to pay more because of it, and the companies are just like, well, we came out. Just exactly as let's go move on and buy more houses. And make other people pay more, that's the point we need to avoid, so what we, what we need is. A fix, but not a knee-jerk fix, we need to find out that it's something that, that really, really works. And I can't tell you who that person's going to be to do it. But as smart as I think all of us are, we're not, we're not the ones to figure it out. So finding someone who does that for a living is what we need and the help. And maybe it's some of the organizations like you mentioned, if they can come and tell us, how do, how would they do it, how is it something, and then we can go to our city. And say, will that work, is this something legally we can do? But Councilmember Whitelock, I love what you're proposing, I just want to make sure we do it right so that we don't go, oop, that wasn't. The, the right thing, and sometimes I'm all for doing something instead of nothing. But I think if, if we found slight holes in that quickly, then the people who are smarter than us will find bigger holes.
I, I just think there's a big unintended consequence cloud out there that I want to make sure is not. As, as cloudy as it looks. So, just, just my thoughts, that's what I'm thinking about, the whole supply and demand thing. I don't think there's for to implement this specific fee on the, at this particular time, anyone want to correct me if I'm wrong? So let's, for purposes of the budget, let's, let's table this and let's see if we need to get a study funded or what we need to do. That, and that'll require more conversations with staff, but as far as the budget goes, let's go to the next one.
On page fifteen on the maps, I just.
You skipped the one on page nine.
Yeah, because we got an answer for that.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, Alan wrote something, it's basically. Because the idea, I guess, was the curtain was to always have the curtain shut when they rent it and only let them rent that side.
Is that what that was? Okay.
Um, so fifteen, they've increased.
Hold on, because I thought that the facility use deposit is two hundred, but the, okay, so it's two hundred. For this room, but the parks are five hundred.
Was that part of my question was on there? Oh yeah, that is on there, uh, he didn't answer that part, I don't think, yeah, so on page nine. Thank you, Kevin. We have um, facility rentals require a two hundred dollar deposit. But our parks require five hundred, and in my mind, that just seems actually backwards because. I think I can do a lot more damage in a building than I will probably at a park. And so I just think they should either be the same or we should have justification of why they're set at what they're set at. And I think Cory might have an idea.
Yeah, so the um, five hundred dollar deposit is for, only for groups of two hundred or more. So we have found with those large groups, they generally don't just use the pavilion, they use the entire park when they have two hundred more people. Which is a lot more cleanup, more damage that can take place, so it's only for groups of two hundred or more, when it's two hundred or less, it drops significantly.
What's capacity at Pioneer Hall?
Don't have that with me.
One eighteen.
Moment.
It's, it's on page nine, maximum occupancy is one eighteen.
Okay. Okay.
So, I, I'm going to, I'm going to nitpick here. But it says all facility rentals require a security deposit of two hundred or three hundred, it doesn't differentiate. The, 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 the number of. On the facility rental, I don't, is, is there something else on the park? That it's, that it's for more than two hun- what page is that on? That's what I'm, that, that, I just want to make sure we are. I don't, what, what page is that? Page six?
Page sixteen.
It says groups of more than. Okay, two hundred there, groups of less than two hundred, I see, no, it's up here where the, okay, I'm. All right. Okay.
When was the last time these fees were assessed and, and come up with?
Yep, from talking to my staff, it was two thousand nineteen, they, they assessed all these parks, athletic fields, pavilions. Um, and gave recommendations, all of them were implemented except for the athletic fees.
And is there a reason why the, the parks are a lot more expensive?
Just for the groups of two hundred or more, just because they've found over time, when they have large groups of two hundred more people, they do cause a lot more damage, a lot more cleanup. Um, potentially, a lot of the, more, I think they said about ninety-five percent of the time they get the deposit back, rarely do we have. Much damage to, that we need to give, hold on to a deposit.
And just for the rest of you, I didn't go this far because I didn't pay attention, but actually on page thirty-one, it tells us when they were revised.
Oh, I didn't look at that part.
I didn't look at it either, but Alan sent it to me in my email.
Or I did.
Well, so the last time these were updated was twenty nineteen?
At least as far as the parks and the pavilion reservations go, that's when our park staff looked at it, it was in two thousand nineteen.
It's five, it's five years, I'm wondering if we shouldn't update a couple of these.
Say, as part of the budget process, we do ask the departments to look at all of the fees that are charged and it may have been the last date that it was changed. Not, not necessarily the last date that it was looked at because we try to have them do that every year.
But if.
So whether or not it changed, then that's, you know, reasons for the department to answer.
The last, so I'm going to, I'm going to say, all things being equal. Two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four, we've had increased water costs, increased personnel costs, we've had increase. In, in a whole lot of costs over the last five years. So I'm wondering if on some of the, on the facility rentals and those kind of things, if we haven't looked at them. If we haven't adopted a change in the last five years. And, and I'm not suggesting that we do it and make this change between now and twenty-sixth of June. We adopt a tentative budget, but I think that particularly facility. Because Councilmember Whitelock's going to talk about park reservations versus field rentals and adults and stuff here in a minute. I think it would give us, and we're going into the Ronwood Park stuff, I think it would be a good. Opportunity to look at. An increase in rental fees over the la- because of the cost that it takes to maintain that park. So I would recommend, at least on the facilities fees, in this building and, and may, and Pioneer Hall. And the, you know, I don't think, and maybe some of this is based on usage, right? The fire department buildings are never used, well, okay, then keep them low so that people might use them. But Pioneer Hall, the older it gets, the more we have to maintain it because it's an old building. The parks cost more to maintain, I think we ought to look at some up, some up charges on those, on, on those.
Couldn't you argue also that maybe it's nice that we're not raising fees every year? I mean, citizens will go, hey, thanks for not raising it every year. There's that process too.
Well, there is, but everything else has gone up over the past five, we haven't raised anything in five years, it's not every year.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I, I guess you're saying let's raise rates, and I'm saying, well, let's not raise rates.
Well, because we, and I know, I'm not saying to raise rates because I just want to make sure we're just covering our costs and not making money off of it.
And they had mentioned that they look at it every year.
Yeah.
Cory, see, and how you're up here on page seventeen. I'm just curious, under leagues, so four B. We have baseball is fifteen dollars per an hour for adults, football fifteen dollars per hour for adults, and soccer is not applicable. I have seen adult teams playing on those soccer at that soccer complex on Sundays frequently. So that's one question, the other one is, why is soccer for youth more than football? I could see more than baseball because they're on dirt, so they're not tearing up grass, but. I think that football would tear up the grass as much or more than soccer, so can you explain those?
Yeah, I had to ask my staff into this, um, so with the adult play, they are not, as of right now, they're not allowed to. Reserve fields for adult play, adult leagues, but they still can show up on a first come, first served basis if it's available, which happens often, they'll. Pick up games where they'll show up at the park as it's open and they'll have a bunch of people play, we are working on our facility use policy now to allow adult reservations. So that's the first thing we've been doing and then we'll look at fees as far as, I'm trying to remember the second question. Sorry, oh, the cost of soccer and football, so those fees, um, from what I was told were established. Um, before two thousand nineteen and it was back when we would prep fields, so a lot of the cost was because we were painting the soccer fields at the time where we're not doing it anymore. Um, and back in two thousand nineteen when we looked at the, the fees, we recommended making some changes and it was voted to. Um, do increases for pavilions, facilities, but not the athletic fields, so those never changed. Based off of our initial cost when we prepared the fields for the leagues.
But the, the, the youth soccer are painting their own fields now, right? Because they got the little.
And, but we've left to pay the same.
Little robot that goes out and paint, I've seen that robot work, it's cool.
And so now we don't do it, but we've, the fees have stayed the same, but I definitely think our athletic fees, like I said, they weren't changed in two thousand nineteen and. From my initial looking at them, they're very low.
If you, if you, I don't really want, I'm not really a fan of increasing them, but I don't think it's fair. To keep soccer at five if the reason it was at five is because we were doing work and we're not anymore, that doesn't seem just. So. I would be okay to see what you wanted to raise them to and would, would, are there three other people that would?
We need to raise football or do we need to lo- lower soccer?
We need to lower soccer, I think, but Cory's, Cory's saying, he thinks.
Job easier.
He feels they're all too low, so I would just like to see what he wanted to bring back to us and then we could go from there.
I, I would agree, I want to see what you would come back with.
I'd like to see something consistent. Across the board that, that all the leagues can live with and that's what I, I.
When I was a soccer mom and coach, there's no way I would have been looking at this book, but had I, I would have been irate. Now over here, I would have come with Alexandra. Said, what are you doing?
We do still have this, I don't know if it had helped, the study from two thousand nineteen, a spreadsheet that shows every other city's, um, charges, our charges. We have it from two thousand nineteen, I can provide that. I, I may not be accurate, but it can still show. But it will still show how far behind we were as far as athletic field.
I'm not really interested in what other cities are doing. I just wanna know what's, what's feasible and good for us, and, and what you need to pay for it.
I, I do like, I would like to see what other cities are charging, just because there's a little bit of a market rate component here, and I wouldn't wanna be outrageous, you know? Compared to other cities. But that, that said, so in terms of this budget and approving the tentative budget, is this something we wanna have more information come back on? We can amend the fee schedule at a later time?
Well, we can, we can do that before the final budget's approved, right?
We can, yeah, but in the tentative budget, we're okay leaving it for right now as the tentative budget, okay?
Then the next one that I have is on page fifteen, and Cory probably won't have the answer to this one. But I just found it curious that they raised for maps, color map, eight, eight and a half by eleven, went from two fifty to seven. But the black and white stayed at a dollar. And I would think that some of that must have been labor, not just, I mean, you're the map guy?
How many black and white maps are we doing?
We don't, we don't do a lot of, honestly, we don't do a lot of maps anymore printing, because it's accessible online. The only time we really do a lot of maps or maps is when a developer or a construction company needs a map of the, um, layout of a utility, so they have it on site. But again, that's all blue staked, so the, the increase, these are larger increases, not a lot, but it's from the ink. Ink costs have gone up.
All ink, not just coloring?
Yeah, but we don't, we don't, I didn't change the black and white, because we don't really do black and white. A map is somewhat useless if you can't see the color.
And if you don't have Larry's screen to see, then they're not useless.
Here's my question, Brian.
Sure.
Since Councilmember Whitelock bring, brings this up. If we don't print black and white ones. Why, why, why don't, if, if the, if somebody wants to come in and get a map from the city? Then why isn't it just a default to a color one? We charge the color one and drop the black and white.
Yeah, we can get, we can get rid of it.
Especially because the black and white says it has a fifty cent minimum, yet the cheapest one's a dollar. I don't want half a map.
I would, my, my personal preference, I, I see Councilmember Shelton agreed with that. My personal preference is that we print the color maps off the plot or the rest of them, we forget. And if somebody wants a map, we say, we print a color map, and we don't do black and white. We just drop the, the black and white and make it simpler.
I'm, I, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
What do you guys think?
I think that'll, that'll be a general fund change of about one dollar.
Just no road money.
What, what it'll do, but, but it'll make the fee schedule simpler. And I think it'll make the, the, the people who will come, come in, it makes it a simpler process.
So we'll take off, we'll take off that whole section two.
Get rid of two.
And, uh, and take off the word color on section one. Okay. I think everybody's in, in favor of that. All right, move to, just kidding.
Don't, you still have a couple, you still have a couple more.
Hey, page twenty is really, um, Chris McConaughey, a resident in our city. Has some concerns, and, and I think they're legitimate concerns. And I know that Mr. Langford has told me that it's not gonna be as much as Mr. McConaughey feels. But this really, this was an error that was made by a developer at some time. Which to me means the city played a role in that, because I don't think that they just went and built their driveways. So I don't know how we're going to handle this, but I don't feel that it's just.
Does it, so Scott, my question on that is, the engineer, uh, cause I know, um, Mr. McConaughey um, has talked about, does, is the engineering review fee? And the, is, does it really cost twenty-six hundred dollars for the city to do that?
So I'm glad, actually, thi- this, this speaks to a bigger, um, a bigger topic, which is development fees in general. Um, I believe Council Office sent, uh, sent a detailed summary of how we calibrated our, our initial fees. And, uh, it was very extensive, took over a year to go through all of the development fees back in twenty-ten. It was the end of twenty-ten, where we went through and said, okay, a lot line adjustment takes an average of ten staff hours. And then, uh, who on city staff reviews a lot line adjustment? And so they went through meticulously, went through each applications and, and assigned an average hour, you know, hourly, uh, staff time per application. And, um, it's, it's been a while. We've adjusted all of our fees, uh, for inflation over the years. But our process, um, really hasn't changed a whole lot, speaking specifically to lot line adjustments. I, I, I thought it, yeah, but let's go through some of the data that, that, uh, um, Chris McConaughey went through, and I contacted some of my colleagues in, in the, some of these cities that he mentioned. And in my line of work, well, any line of work, the answers you get are kind of based on the questions you ask. And so I, I called up a few of my colleagues and said, hey, I'm curious. Um, you know, I'm getting some of this information, and, and a lot of cities don't. When, when it comes to a lot line adjustment, what they will do is take a, a, an hour tops. And they'll say, well, it's an R one eight zone, so if you move the lot line, are you gonna have at least eight thousand square feet? Yeah, good, check, done, move on. We go through a lot more, uh, in-depth review, which really helps, uh, avoid some, some long-term issues. We look at easements, we look at, um, building setbacks. We look at a lot of things that many of these cities do not look at. And, and so that's why it takes about ten hours of staff time. And so, you know, it, again, twenty-ten, it's been, been a minute, right? Um, but our processes really haven't changed a whole lot. Could we take another look at doing a fee study? Yes, we could. Um, it would, it, it takes a lot of staff time, and, and it did. Um, but I don't know if that answers your questions directly.
You're saying ten hours at two hundred and eighty-eight dollars an hour?
Well, I can't speak to the engineering review fee. Um, that, that study, that study did not cover them.
Yeah, I mean, cause that's all we're allowed to really get from a fee is what it costs. That's all we're allowed to really get, so I just wanna make sure we're not the guy who's making ten thousand dollars every time he redraws something. Unless we're hiring him to do this, then we need to stop that. But I just wanna make sure, because it has opened up something now that makes it go through. And I don't think many of us knew about what it costs to do that, till he brought that up. And then we all kinda went, oh, man, that, that's a lot. It looks like you just put a ruler on a piece of paper and go zoop, but I know it's more than that.
But yeah, hearing the explanation, it sounds fairly reasonable.
Well, that's why we don't.
That's all we need to provide.
This is, I mean, granted, we don't get a lot line, a, a lot of lot line adjustment requests. We, we get a hand, we get a handful every year. Um, but honestly, we don't get a lot of complaints about our application fees. We don't, we simply don't.
So I guess I have a follow-up question then. Is this something? In your professional opinion, do you feel like this was done because, uh, in error somewhere prior? Because how did, how did they end up with their lot lines along a driveway? Cause I would, because walking that neighborhood, I would assume, can't, I shouldn't do that, but that those, those homes were made with driveways. It's not like some that I can tell maybe they've been added later. So how did this occur? And then the, the follow-up to that is, then can we do a fee waiver? Cause.
Council can always do that, sure. Um, thi- this particular subdivision was, was done thirty-plus years ago. And, uh, the, uh, the level of detail, the, the, the sophisticated drawing tools and stuff, they just weren't there. There. Um, it, that's why we don't get a lot of lot line adjustment requests. It's not really the, the fee. Now, every once in a while, we get a kind of a goofy, you know, someone will build a fence line, and it'll get kind of, that'll be the de facto line. Or the survey marks, the, the, the rebar in the back property gets moved.
But just because something was done thirty years ago, doesn't mean we should accept that mistake and force somebody to pay for somebody's mistake.
Exactly, and that's, that's where I'm at with this one. It just seems like.
Right and wrong shouldn't cost a, a ton of money, you know what I mean? It's just.
So to me, it sounds like the fees aren't out of line, but that in this instance, there was a mistake made, and we could do a fee waiver.
The thing I'd like to ask the body to be careful of is to avoid the appearance of giving preferential treatment for a former member of the body.
That's a huge thing.
For me, it has nothing to do with the person, other than he's a resident that brought a problem. And that clearly that lot line was sent to the county by mistake, cause it just, it makes no sense.
It's between the developers and the, and the county.
I, if you look, and I've looked at this, this full subdivision, this is not the only this is not the only lot line that's out of whack.
Which is a problem, cause how many of the residents are gonna start coming forth? Once one resident finds out they did a lot line adjustment, and then it's gonna, it's gonna be a ripple effect. That's another concern.
Yeah, some, a consideration, I would say, yeah.
Scott, I'd be interested to know, if this, it sounds like this neighborhood got messed up somehow. If would, i- is it something that we need to look at the entire neighborhood and fix, or is it?
It'll cost money.
Well, I know it's gonna cost money, but.
More than the fees.
So here's my question on this is the only place we have fee waiver request fees, which I find fun, is in this section. And it's fifteen hundred and sixty dollars or fifteen hundred and thirty-one dollars currently, going up by twenty-nine. But we have fee waiver requests all the time coming here for fee waivers of five hundred, six hundred, three hundred dollars for parks and this and that. How are they applying to waive those fees if it costs them fifteen hundred dollars to waive the fees? Are they, there another process to waive fees?
That's the only one I'm aware of.
So, so do we, Cor, maybe you can answer that. I don't know. Do we really have people coming in here and applying for fee waivers of their, for their little league team to have a party in the park? And they don't wanna pay the five hundred dollar whatever, and they're paying fifteen hundred dollars to make that request?
No, and, and this is, when, when anyone comes to administration with a fee waiver request, we refer them to the council office. Because the waiving of fees is the council's purview. The, uh, but I believe the fee waiver requests we get, you see. And they are generally, you know, the Copper Hills Baseball League, the, uh, Jordan Education Foundation, the
Jennifer Andelen.
Uh, Jennifer Andelen and the Unamana, uh, Unamano Amiga.
What I'm saying is, these people are not paying fifteen hundred dollars to request a fee waiver. Yet we have a fee in here for a waiver request of fifteen hundred dollars.
Is the, is, so I, I guess I'm gonna ask the more semantical question. On that item eight. It says waiver slash deferral request. Is that really a fee waiver? Or is that some other sort of waiver that was designed? And that the fee waivers weren't designed, that this fifteen hundred and sixty dollars isn't a fee waiver request? It's a, it's some sort of other waiver for community development, because it's waiver slash deferral. And, and so that would be my question, what is that, yeah, what is that? Because it, because it doesn't seem, cause you're right, it doesn't make sense to say, oh, we take all these other fee waivers and we're not charging anything, and for community development, it's fifteen hundred. Because the process is, is that you do everything that you do, and then you ask the council for to write the check, right? That's what we're doing. And so I, my question on that altogether is, is it, it says waiver slash deferral. What does that really mean? And maybe we need to just take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, and Scott can probably speak to it better. This is under the development or the planning and engineering section. You see the header, development reviews. Uh, so this is under six F, other fees under development reviews. The fee waivers that come to you are almost always related to use of park rentals, use of facilities, special event permits type of stuff.
Well, so when this was brought up, right, when Chris brought this to the council and said, this is an outrageous fee, I just need this changed and this changed. And other cities cost two hundred dollars and we cost two thousand dollars, or whatever. I said, well, why don't you just do a fee waiver request, like Jennifer Andelen does, or whoever does for whatever program, for whatever fee? They just come in and request a fee waiver. Why don't you just come and request a fee waiver? We'd probably look at it and go, yeah, maybe you should get one. I, I, Alan, go ahead.
Yes, if, if you recall, when, uh, when Mr. McConaughey emailed the council back in January about this. The council office sent, uh, an email to him on land use fee waivers. It is different than a, a use fee waiver. So there is a very specific thing in our code. Um, where a land use fee waiver, and I'll, I'll look up the reference here shortly. Um, but the council becomes a quasi judicial, and you have to apply, you have to pay a fee to have a land use fee waiver. You become quasi judicial.
Is this a land use? We, we became quasi judicial with, uh, Sandy City. That wasn't a, that, was that a land use fee waiver? That was on the, that was on the, the, the golf course, remember? It was on the, maybe that was a land use fee waiver, because it was the the, about the porous surface versus non-porous surface. You remember the surface? You remember that?
Um, Ms. Murphy indicated that was a storm drain, uh, fee waiver, right? Yeah, cause the, yeah, the impervious.
The, uh, the West Jordan Code for a land use fee waiver is founded fifteen fifteen five-two appeals to the city council. In, to the community development department within fifteen calendar days following the misdrave decision.
Section fifteen five?
Fifteen.
Two.
Five-two.
Fifteen five-two, okay, sorry.
Fifteen five-two. Um, and in the fee schedule, there's like a twelve hundred and fifty dollar application fee to have the fee waiver. Or to apply for a fee waiver on, on land use. So it's different than reserving a park or reserving a building according to this section of code, as I've been informed.
Okay, but this isn't that. I don't.
A- as you can tell, no one's really used this in a very, very long time.
But I have a feeling this neighborhood is going to start using that, so we need to figure something out. Because I don't feel it's the neigh- the, this neighborhood's fault that they're sorry, this, um, their property.
Lot lines got recorded wrong.
Correct, because that is going to cause issues way down the road as people move and sell and whatnot. So I would like to figure out a solution that will benefit this neighborhood.
You could also argue that nobody else will look at the lot line.
They will.
They will when they try to sell their house.
Will they? I don't think they will.
There's the option if Chris tells people, hey, I got this waived, you should look at your property line.
It's gonna happen now, but.
Well, and I think there's an argument that lot line fees don't fall under state code ten nine eight five-ten, that that section of city code references. This is applications for zoning, for things that are denied and then appealed, and that's the fee that they're asking to be waived. It's not, so anyway. Um, I, I just, I just question if Chris couldn't just come to us and say, maybe I want a fee waiver.
But the, the section, you're right. I mean, it, it says here, it, it says Alan in, in. But the the section, you're right. I mean, it it says here, it it says Alan in in fifteen five two. It specifically makes reference to ten nine eight five ten.
Right.
And so if that's, if 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 a lot line adjustment is not a a ten, that if that's not a, you know, a Lugma five ten, Lugma section five ten action, then maybe this section doesn't apply. Or we need to modify the ordinance so that we really know what we're talking about. I mean, this is a good discussion because this is an appeal to the city council on a fee charged in accordance and they have to do a written appeal for the fee that we charged. You know, I remember doing that one on the stormwater, but stormwater's not a land use. And we were quasi judicial in that one. And so I I I think maybe this is an opportunity, we'll burden the city attorneys off. But you know, maybe this is an opportunity to look at fifteen. You know, that that section of fifteen, figure out what fees really ought to be waived and what an appeal of a fee charge is. You know, because it seems to me that an appeal, an appeal of a fee charge would be uh, there's a couple of these in the in the list that are a thousand dollars plus a hundred dollars an hour for, you know, and you charged three thousand dollars because it costs thirty hours. And and they would appeal that decision not just a flat, a flat fee, because that just seems like it's a normal fee waiver. You know where I'm going?
Be happy to look at it and and Duncan and I can take a look at it. I would ask the council to keep this in there, as you indicated, Councilman Green. The it it is, it also includes deferral agreements. We we use those quite frequently with road construction and.
Well, and and that's, that's why I wonder if the waiver is a different kind of waiver than fee waiver. And maybe you can take a look at this as well.
But we we do have to be careful, and I agree, this is a discussion that we need to, we need to have. This isn't a budget discussion anymore, so we we need to table this. But we need to be very careful as we do this, that we don't open ourselves up to an onslaught of fee waiver, fee waiver requests that are legitimately like gonna clog up the planning department, you know, and have one of these unintended consequences that I.
Yeah, basketball courts get poured just off the property line. We would get inundated because people would want to bounce their lines all the time. This is, this is definitely a different case.
Right, so this is, that that, which is why an application for a fee waiver. But for my two cents, you could have an application for a fee waiver for the waiving the fee of the fee waiver fee.
Uh, yeah, you're right.
At this point, that's, that's what I would request. I'd say, okay, I want to waive the fees on my lot line and my fee waiver fee request. But I have to pay that fee in order to get it. See, there's a problem here. Anyway, okay, this is not a budget item anymore, but let's have, let's put that policy discussion. Alan, maybe we can put that on our to talk about, so while somebody thought.
And Alan answered my other two, and it's in the email. Thank you, Chair.
All right, awesome. The only one I wanted to bring up is not currently on the fee schedule, and I gave Corbin and and the team a heads up on this. And that is a transportation utility fee. We uh, we talked about it, we broached the subject at our retreat when we talked about things and and it's currently something that we can do. Some cities have done it. And we talked about wanting to do that, and then we had Brian talk a couple of weeks ago in our workshop about the hole that our streets are in. The pothole specifically. Uh, the the financial hole that our streets are in and the the ginormous price tag that it would take to get those kind of back on schedule. And so I wanted to bring up the the idea of the transportation utility fee since it was not proposed, even though I think that we had a majority at the retreat say we wanted to look at it. And yet it's not proposed in the budget. And I wasn't gonna bring it up until Brian mentioned the hole we were in, and I thought, you know what, maybe we do need to bring that up. So before we get too far into the, well, too far, before we get too far down the road, I'll keep it going. Dirk's not here, somebody's gotta do it. Before you get too far down the road in the budget discussion, I think we need to just at least have a quick chat about transportation utility fee. So, um can we do it? What's our whole, Corbin, we talked about this yesterday for a minute, so can you kind of?
So I I can speak to you from administration's perspective. I want to pull Brian up, but I won't make him. We do have a big unfunded liability when it comes to service maintenance of roads. And if we're not really careful, that unfunded liability regarding the service maintenance of roads grows and can grow dramatically to the point of being entirely unsustainable, and there's some discussion about whether we're already there. We are not ready to propose a formal transportation utility fee right now. But we are working on studying the issues around funding. How big is this liability? What are the best ways to tackle it beyond what we're already doing? And is the transportation utility fee the best alternative? And would it be supported by the constituency? There's also political considerations. Uh, this is something the legislature is looking at closely after the Supreme Court case that Pleasant Grove went through. So we're watching that closely as well, but it is something I think we will need to have a lot of hard discussions about over the next six months. But it's not something we're proposing for the FY twenty five budget right now.
Right, it's something that I'm wanting to maybe propose for the FY twenty five budget right now. So that's why I asked about it. Um, I understand why it's not in there.
Yeah.
Case, case made, but I also understand the need for it.
Yeah, one of the, one of the issues with the, and Josh will correct me, but one of the issues with the Supreme Court case is that my understanding is the court affirmed Pleasant Grove's ability to levy the fee. And then they kind of deferred on whether they endorsed the methodology by which Pleasant Grove went through um, the way in which they apportioned the fee and the costs among the different property owners in Pleasant Grove. And that's what's a little bit unsettled, whether legislature is gonna enforce a certain methodology or not, or enforce a a certain study process. So we want to make sure we're gonna get that right in a way that will be supported by our residents and supported by our legislature and the courts.
And if I remember it's been a while since I read that case.
I've got it in front of me.
But uh, it seemed to me that the tax had to be proportional to the usage and there had to be some sort of justification for that of some sort, that it just can't be a imposition of a fee without appropriate methodology. Is that, am I close?
Yeah, the language that the court used is to be a legitimate fee for service as opposed to just a tax. The amount charged must bear a reasonable relationship to the services provided, the benefits received or a need created by those who must actually pay the fee. So the idea there is that, that you need to have that basis and be able to articulate it, or at least that's the presumption based on what the court has said. Like Corbin pointed out, the court didn't answer that question of what would be a reasonable fee. They remanded it back down to the trial court to say, hey, you didn't analyze this because you determined it was a tax. It's not a tax, so it can go through as a fee, but you gotta do it right. And there was a question about whether or not that question was even preserved for the appeal. Um, and so basically, we don't get the answer there. The understanding that I have is that the legislature was close to considering a proposal for setting up framework for what would be a reasonable fee during the last legislative session, but that that didn't actually get through for a vote. Um, there's a high likelihood that that'll come back around, again, is what I understand. Which would then provide, you know, solid clarity on what a reasonable fee would or would not be. At this point, we're kind of making assumptions, but I think we would need some sort of basis to articulate whatever it is that we chose for that to say that it was reasonable, because if not reasonable, it would not hold up to challenge.
So here's, here's my worry with this road fee. So let's just use twenty five dollars a year per household. I'm just use that number. So you collect twenty five dollars a year per household. When does my street get done? So I have been in my neighborhood, it's thirty, probably thirty five years old. My streets have not been touched for thirty five years. Not the city's fault, kind of the city's fault, but just because you are doing so many roads. So I don't want to pay money into a road fund and then never get my roads in my in my neighborhood done.
Do you only drive on the street?
Oh, thirteen hundred Wes, we've been working on your road.
I'm talking about neighborhood roads. Now, right now I do pay taxes on roads and Thirteenth gets fixed once in a while. Redwood Road, never, but you know, that money is going in. I guess what I'm saying, if we're doing this road fund like you're saying, I want my road done. I don't want to wait thirty more years for my road in my neighborhood done.
I mean, roads, roads are not unlike water systems, sewer systems, stormwater systems, streetlights even where uh, the system wide benefit justifies system wide fees for service. Uh, we can't, we can't provide a road in front of your house unless there are roads to get to the road in front of your house. Uh, but I get what you're saying, Chad, right? There's gonna be a lot of that. I'm paying this fee.
So the hundred people that live in my neighborhood, and I live in Kelvin's neighborhood, and his road hasn't been done either. I don't want to pay money into a a fund and then never have the road get fixed, because right now my neighborhood needs to be milled and graded. I know it does, but I'm not in line.
My road's been crack sealed. I got, I I got the little cracks.
I think it got cracked sealed like twenty years ago.
Well, the city staff is, the city staff would be able to get to your road sooner if the city staff had the money to get to your road sooner.
Maybe.
But to, I I don't see how that's amazing.
The city attorney's.
I don't have control over when and how and where they they do their roads.
Right, but the more money they have, the more roads they can do. So the faster you get through the list.
Right, but I want that money to go to my road and get my road done.
But but to the city attorney's point, we 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 have to have.
No, but I need roads.
We have to have a reasonable basis to charge the fee. And we don't have any sort of construct, and if we just make up a number, it's gonna get challenged.
I think we do. Corbin, tell them what you told me yesterday about what we've done as far as street mapping and the net, the need and where Brian came up with the number.
Yes and no, Zach. So I was telling you yesterday, um, we have done really good PCI analysis of our roads. Uh, we've sent a car around, we hired a study. They have this fancy car with all kinds of cameras that drives every lane mile we have and takes all kinds of pictures. And then runs it through computer systems to say, this road segment is a piece, a pavement condition index of a fifty, meaning it's got lots of cracks. Some of the cracks are all the way through, some of the cracks are road wide. This road segment is a PCI of seventy, meaning it's a little better. This segment is a ninety. It's really good. It's brand new. We have, so we have.
So come on.
Hey, we we're, so we have the analysis of the conditions of our roads really pretty dialed in. Uh, that's why we know the hole we're in today. What we don't have is the study that the court's referring to, which is the reasonable justification back to the apportionment of the fee. This kind of land use generates this many trips, therefore it should pay this percentage of the overall total trip cost to maintain the roads. Do the math and it comes out to this fee for a resident, this fee for this kind of commercial, this fee for this kind of commercial. That's the study work that Pleasant Grove did that I think the Supreme Court is kind of referring to. That's the hope, that's part of the homework we need to do over the next six months is trip generation analysis with each different land use type to say, okay, here's how big the hole is, here's how much we want to try to fill the hole. Here's how the different land uses contribute to the hole. Here's how we would apportion the fees to generate this much revenue to fill the hole this much.
If we did a.
If that makes sense.
If we did a flat fee, maybe Josh, and we don't apportion it, would we need a study to know how to apportion it if we just do a flat fee?
I would argue that we would so that we can show that whatever that flat fee is, is reasonable. Because if we set that flat fee at a thousand dollars, you know, anybody could come in and say, well, that's not reasonable. Now, obviously, the lower the fee is, the less likely it is that we're crossing into unreasonable. But there would still be room for somebody to come in and challenge that and say, I want to see the basis of that. And unless we have an answer to that question, then we're subject to challenge.
So in a nutshell, what you guys are trying to tell us is even if there was a majority of council members who wanted to implement this fee, you wouldn't be able to do so without having it potentially challenged in court because we don't have quite enough information. Is that where you're at?
That's what I would say, yes.
Brian, what was the number again that you told us? How how much would we have to spend to get to where we want to be over the next how many years?
To get to a PCI of seventy, a pavement condition index of seventy is our goal. That's a pretty good road. Um, to do that citywide, over seven years, it'd be twenty five million a year.
So, so I I just wanted to let everybody know what the number I was thinking of was something akin to our streetlight fee or maybe a little more, maybe double our streetlight fee, five, six, seven dollars a month per per bill, right? Because we don't charge streetlights differently for a commercial than we do for residential, right? We just charge flat streetlight fee. So I was thinking five, six, seven, and now it's nowhere near twenty five million dollars for seven years, right? Which, by the way, is not twenty five million dollars divided by seven, it's twenty five millions times seven, just sort of, I know we had some question about that earlier. So we're talking a hundred and seventy five million dollars, and I'm talking about raising a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars in a year, maybe a million dollars. I I don't see how we, how somebody could come to us and say, that's not reasonable when we know we have a hole that's twenty five million dollars big and we're just trying to spit on it.
If you have no basis, all the court's gotta say is you got no base, you you you, yeah, you made up a number, you got no.
I didn't make up the number.
No.
He gave me a justification for a number, a whole lot bigger than that.
But what you're just saying is everybody has to pay a flat fee, but you don't know what the individual's impact. Because I'll guarantee you that I'm I'm gonna pick on somebody. H Mark's impact on the fees is different than Chad Lamb in my neighborhood. The impact on the roads there is different.
Sure.
And so if we're saying that everybody's the same, I'm gonna say, wait, 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 wait a minute. H Mark's paying three dollars. What I'm saying is you've got to have a basis to say, hey, it's X number of parking spots, whether that's and and what we're, you just can't, you just can't throw a a number in the air and say, well, we gotta do something to start it up. Because somebody will get Utah Taxpayers Association or somebody to back the lawsuit and say you had no reasonable basis for the charge. And they'll get it, go to court, we'll get litigated and it'll get struck down because there was no reasonable base. Yes, we have a deficit, but there's no reasonable basis for the charge.
The other potential problem that you run into with a flat charge is someone could challenge it as a tax as opposed to a fee, because if he is based on use taxes, you know, based on some other calculation. And if it is flat and it is a tax, there's an entirely different process for adoption that we would need to go through. And that was at the heart of the Larson v Pleasant Grove case, was this question of is it a tax or is it a fee? To put it in that fee category, we want to be able to point to something specifically for it. There's other reasons why, you know, we could perhaps argue that it's not a tax, but we'd open ourselves up to that discussion.
How how is this different than our streetlight? Fee that we have on, are you?
Yeah.
Why is it different than that?
Or or a parks fee, which Harriman does as a flat five ninety five or whatever it is.
Which we get rid of.
Which we implemented for one month and then repealed.
I'll wait for like two years, it's longer than a month.
Thirteen.
I I'm just struggling to understand why we can have a streetlight fee.
And not a roads fee.
Yeah.
And it's a flat fee.
Well, we should have a, we should have this similar justification and study behind a streetlight fee.
Nobody sued yet, though.
Too, right. I mean, yeah. And the bigger the fee, right, the higher the likelihood of the challenge. One of the things, this is a big issue. It's gonna take a big political lift with the whole community. We want to, we don't, we don't want to roll this out and not be able to be really clear, articulate and persuasive about the need for it and the justification for it. So that's what we're working on is trying to, trying to. Trying to make sure that we can do this in a way that it is, uh, it's supported by the community, not challenged by the community.
Let me, let me, um, back council member Jacob for just a moment in argument and ask. If we wait another year, that number's only gonna go that much higher. We get that much worse behind the eight ball. Is there any way to address this concern?
We're starting to do that. I would respond in two ways. One, this budget that's proposed does dip into the fund balance on Class C reserves. Pretty substantially. So we're already proposing that we spend more on roads this year than we're getting in on Class C road funds. To try to stay ahead of this, uh, and get ready for it.
That's obviously not sustainable though.
This is, yeah, that's not sustainable. Uh, second, this is a fee, it's not a property tax. When our ducks are in a row and we can kind of hopefully read with more clarity the tea leaves of the legislature. And we have the study and the community support behind it, we can implement this mid fiscal year. This is not like the property tax where there's time certain on. Right now at the start of the fiscal year, it's our only window to start it.
We are at a fiscal year right now, and if this is something that the council really believes in. And somebody's gonna hate me for saying this. Why not raise the property tax rates substantially and get this under control? Why can the council not do that? You, so. So you have to raise these funds.
You can do it out of property tax, you, right? You could do it out of property tax and that wouldn't, that would be much more difficult to challenge. The city council has really broad discretion on how you spend your property tax revenue. Person, this is me, this is not the city speaking, this is Corbin speaking. My personal opinion, I like trying to diversify the revenue sources for the city. And I like trying to match up, uh, whenever possible, the, uh, the service. With the demand that's creating the need to provide the service.
So if, if, if you wanted to raise property tax to come up with the twenty-five million. You would have to do a hundred and forty-two point eight five percent property tax increase.
And that's all, and it's still less than what Harriman charges their residents for property tax. Still less.
Yeah, yeah, it is. We, but we would, we, we would be, we'd be among the highest. We would be among the highest property tax collectors in the valley at that point in time.
And all of us would serve one term.
And is that?
And Chad's street still wouldn't be done.
Chad's street still wouldn't be done. So the question is, is, I mean, if you're willing to raise property taxes. But we've already done the truth in taxation that says we're gonna do three point.
We actually haven't. That's, that's our vote next time on the twenty-sixth.
The, the fact of the matter is, is that a hundred and forty-two percent property tax increase is not where I'm gonna go down.
If I'm a one-term council member and our roads are fixed, I'm fine with that.
Hey, but here's the problem. You're not dedicating that property tax increase to roads. So for while you're on there, it might be, but the next person that fills your seat might feel that that money should be used for something else.
That would be a problem. I don't, I wouldn't want that money to go anywhere else. And in, in property tax, they can spend it wherever, right?
That's why putting it enterprise.
Problem for sure. So, thank you for that.
The, the twenty, just a reminder to you, the twenty-five million dollar number. Um, that's to solve the issue over a seven-year period.
Right. Going forward after the seven years would be less, right? It'd be a maintenance number.
Correct. But it's, this is such a big issue. I don't think we'll solve it in seven years. I think we need to come up with a proposal. That gets us, gets us pointed in the right direction, gets us to a, a, a state of acceptable. PCI level that we can maintain in the long term and an acceptable tax burden. That balances all these competing issues surrounding this, surrounding this particular challenge.
So, so my, my thoughts, just really quick, I, I, I feel like we have a reasonable justification, just from this conversation right here. I, I think a study, if we're gonna do an apportion fee, I agree, we would need a study to, to do an apportion fee. Or, or we would have to look at, um, how another city justified theirs. And copy somebody else's and say, they did a study, we'll just piggyback, right? I think, I think the number that I'm thinking of is so, so if we wait. If we wait till the legislature puts in a framework. I looked at their, uh, the bill that didn't pass this last session that, uh, it passed the house and it never got out of rules in the senate. Because there was some opposition to it by some important groups. I looked at that bill and that bill would basically say you have to do a study. That's basically what that bill said. Cities have done this. Cities, there are several cities in Utah that have a transportation utility fee. Have they all done studies? I don't know. Have they done an analysis like we've done? That has determined that we have a need that we need to fill and that it has a dollar amount attached to it? I, I don't know. I don't know what they've done. I don't know what they haven't done. I know that we have a need. And like council member Shelton said, the further we wait, the bigger that need gets. Now, do I think we could get a study done in the next three months and then come back with a utility fee proposed schedule? Maybe. I'm personally concerned that that study is gonna show that we need a lot bigger of a fee than what I'm thinking of. I think, I think most cities are in the twenty or thirty or forty dollar a month range for residents and in the several hundred dollar a month range for some businesses. There, it's huge, right? We'd have the Chamber of Commerce banging down our door with that if we tried to implement that all at once. But if we, if we started with something, a, a five, six, seven dollar a month utility fee on your utility bill, just like streetlights. And we just say, this is for roads, this is to start working on the problem. Even if it's just to fund the study so that we know how to apportion it next time we look at the fee, whatever it is. I just, I just really have an aversion to kicking cans. And I know it's not kicking the can, but if I, I fear if we wait for the legislature to do it, we're gonna be stuck with a set of rules that maybe. Don't fit us and we're gonna have a kind of a one size fits all kind of a mandate.
And if we do it and the legislature changes the law, we still have to change it and we're still stuck with what they do.
We may or may not, right?
No, they're not gonna.
Yeah, but we got almost a year. If we, if we implemented this in July, if we, if we said we were gonna put a fee on our utility bill. We would be collecting those funds and, and I understand that we need a study to do it. Basically based on your use, but if we did it just the same way we do our streetlights, that's still something.
You don't need a study if you just want to raise your property tax and apportion the top property tax increase to the. Um, to, to the roads and road maintenance, because it's a tax, a property tax.
I think we're talking a fee on the utility bill.
If you talk about a fee, a transportation utility fee, and you want to fall under the protection in the Larson v Pleasant Grove case. That said, it's a fee, that's where we need the studies to go with it, yeah.
Well, it's, you need reasonable justification.
Reasonable justification.
Which I think, I think we have. Now, I'm not the lawyer, I'm not the city attorney, so I'm not the one to say that we have it or don't have it. But I think we have it. I think we have a rational basis for, for doing it. Um, I, I feel like we do, but in, anyway, I, I. I don't see us getting it done tonight. The problem I have with the property tax law, and that was just what council member Shelton said. Is we don't get to earmark property tax spending. We can set it in the budget, but we don't get to earmark that. You don't have to spend it.
We could, you can always move money to, you can dedicate the money into a CIP transfer. Or, and so yes, you can earmark that money because it goes into the CIP. So at least you could get it into the CIP and not into the ongoing budget. But that would only be for the first year. Because you, you can't commit a future council to that kind of increase.
If, if you wanted to pay for this or pay for at least a portion of it based on a property tax levy. But you wanted to assure that future city councils couldn't shift that to some other need.
At least not easy.
You could do a geo bond, a, a geo bond for road maintenance. Uh, that would have to be voted on by the public, but it would be a property tax backed bond to a dedicated purpose.
That's, that's actually interesting to me.
And the geo bond that we have now, it's, this is the last year. So if we want it, now would be the, to look forward to an, to an election and those kind of things. Now's the time to look at that if that was what we were going to do, cause the geo bond with that.
Yeah.
Point five mils or whatever it is, point zero zero five, that expires this year and so, yeah.
That, that's, that is interesting to me, an interesting idea. As you started talking about property tax, I knew exactly where you were going with that.
Now, the, the, I mean, pros and cons, right? It has to be approved by the voters. There's a pro, right? You put it in front of the voters, if they wanna assess themselves the tax. The con is it's gotta be approved by the voters. Yep. So we have to do, as a city, you have to do a good job of conveying the need and the purpose behind it. Without breaking rules about lobbying for it too much, right? That's a little bit of a fine line, but. More importantly is we do a geo bond, then there's certain rules about how we spend the money and how quickly spend the money. We can't do a geo bond and then spend the money or spend the bond proceeds over seven years. And off the top of my head, I don't know, but you have a finite window on spending those bond proceeds. And I don't know, we would, we would have orange cones on every, every street in this city, yeah.
You wouldn't want to fix them all at once, right?
Right? Like, we want to address the need, but we want to address the need with minimal impact to the community while we're addressing the need.
Right.
And a geo bond is, um, we ju-, we would just have to work through that and figure that out. That's all I'm saying.
What is the timeline? What's the time restrictions on a geo bond? I know there's, you have to, you have to pass the resolution or whatever to put it on the ballot. By a certain date to get it on the ballot for a given year.
I don't, we'd have to bring in our, uh, our financial advisors to help us through that process, yeah, and timelines.
At any time, right? That's not a property tax increase or a budget specific thing.
It, it is, it's time sensitive to the election, yeah.
Yeah. So whether it's this year's election or next year's election, I would so much rather have it on this year's election, cause your turnout's gonna be huger. Hugely. It's gonna be a very bigly turnout. It's gonna be wonderful. We're talking about building roads, not.
Okay, so let's do a study and go home.
Well, yeah, again, okay, so we're not, we won't put it in the consolidated fee schedule for right now, so. But we, at least we have, I haven't just talked about, and I just want to make sure we keep talking about it.
I love that we're having this debate and this discussion, uh, looking for the right solution.
Well, just real quick to the Corbin's point, once we figure out what we're, the fee or whatever we, the, the, the process we use. To Chad's point, he's lived in his house for thirty years or whatever and your street hasn't been done. Ain't Calvin. You're getting thirteen to us done, so. No.
Private streets, so.
To my point though, even though we get this money, it's, we, we base the repair off of PCI, right? So we start at the bottom of the PCI, we'll have a plan and move it forward as far as we can with the funding. That's what we do right now.
Chad's street is not the worst street in the city. Leland Drive, Leland, Leland Drive is the worst PCI.
Leland Drive will be overlaid next week.
I love it. I'm, I'm glad we're having this discussion, cause I want to work through these issues. It's good for us to know what the holdup is, right? I mean, when we talked about it in January and we said, yeah, we're kind of open to doing this and then the budget comes through and we don't see it, we don't hear it. We don't know why and we're like, okay. You know, it, it, it's good to get this out on the open, on the table so that, so that the council knows that the staff is working on the issue. And this, you, you know, and this, and we don't just say, hey, we told you to do something and crickets, right? It's not one of the things that makes the weekly departmental report, so, yet. Okay, so that was my only fee issue. Um, are we to an agreement on a tentative budget for the most part?
Did we decide yes on the hundred five thousand for the code enforcement?
Okay, code enforcement, thumbs up if you want to do it. Panel was yes, okay, so yeah, we go for it.
Say if there are any changes that you wanted to make from what was proposed on that list. It would be recommended to transfer the, that amount to the CIP fund. If you wanted to maintain that three point five percent, um, increase for property tax, it would just go over to CIP funds.
Okay.
Um, so other than that, on the fee schedule, the only one that I have to make an official change right now is on the maps. And the rest, and the rest, and the rest, we have time until, until August, which we can.
I have another, I have another change that I want to have made in the, in the budget book. And that is the top employers of the city. Utah National Guard needs to be listed with eight hundred and one people. Yeah.
Or you can, yeah. Are they paid for by the state budget or are they paid for out of the federal budget?
Yes.
State budget?
Most of it is fed, most of those people that work out there are federal money. They will get a few bucks in state money, but not much.
Okay, just curious.
It's all fed, it's, but it's almost a hundred percent.
Is that the biggest in the city or is that?
East side of the road, the east side of the road is a hundred percent federal money.
Gotcha. Is that, um, where does that put them on the list? Number two, three, four?
Number two, I think, if I remember right.
It's always fun to think that the second largest employer in our city is the federal government, yes. Talk about growing government, nevermind. All right. Um, bigger than West Jordan even. All right. Any, any further discussion? I think we're, I think we're about there for the tentative budget.
We got an hour or fifteen minutes still.
Till Apollo Burger closes or what, what are we talking about?
We're gonna make it to midnight tonight. Just like the old days, Kelly.
I remember going to In-N-Out Burger at one AM with David Bricky. All right. Um, seeing no other discussion, we'll call this adjourned. Adjourned at ten forty-six. Oh, Jamie, yeah, don't anybody leave. Jamie, President Davidson. I will just say, since this is off the record, but I'm still amplified.